Speaker Juan Pat, we're continuing the discussion on Bill 413.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Yesterday I had, you know, attempted to respond to Senator Pangolinan's questions and concerns and yesterday was at the end of session, I was able to go back taking some of his concerns and seeing how we'll be able then to prepare an amendment in which then we'll be able to cap the amount that would be available from the school qualified construction bond, rather than just leaving it open-ended because the project could really be, yes, a lot less, especially since it's just an expansion, although it was going to include other projects other than just an expansion of classrooms, that the best thing to do then based on the availability of these bond monies, which is $21.8 million, that we then should be able to go out at least for this fiscal year and next fiscal year. We're not attempting to go out for the 2012, which we heard that already our educational facility, I mean, educational agency is eligible again to receive that dollar amount. So, the amendment that we have passed out, which would be on page two, line four, I mean, I'm sorry, section two, page four, line 16, and on D, to continue on with right afterward, ended with, and the period is to add then, a comma, remove the period and add a comma instead, and put at the words, "with total cost of such project not to exceed And then below that then also, because there will be, we will definitely realize, we should be able to realize a savings, and I'll just give you an example, that if at the $21.8 million, if we were to, and since in the bill we are capping it also the percentage at 8.5 percent, that we would be able to yield then $2 million that can be, that would end up being our debt obligation instead for $21.8 million. If the percentage rate was 6.75, then the debt obligation would be $1.7 million. So therefore, the government will realize a savings of anywhere between, depending on what the interest rates are, we determine, so it's anywhere between $900,000 at the high of eight and a half percent, and even a low of 6.75 at, you know, 1.7, so the savings will be $1.2 million. So, the second amendment then, added on to continue with this, is that these savings of between $900,000 to $1.2 million that the remainder of the funds from the existing lien supra not utilized for this project shall be subject to legislative appropriation.
Should we divide that question or just do both of them at one time? Anybody wish to be heard? Senator Uggan on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I do understand the concern of the good speaker in terms of trying to, are we dealing with the proposed amendment separately? Or are we looking at collectively addressing them? Because in terms of the remainder of the funds, I think that it only would be appropriate that these funds not be utilized for any other projects, and I'm trying to figure out if in fact, the allocation here, perhaps it should be directly linked to the $2.9 million figure as opposed to a general statement, but I think it pretty much covers to some extent in terms of exactly what the utilization will be, let's say for example, and shall be limited to and shall not exceed $2.9 million, and something to that effect. I see the confused look on your face, Mr. Speaker. I think one thing about this whole process is when in fact, the remainder of the funds shall be subject to legislative appropriation, I would think that that is something that does not necessarily have to be inserted into the proposal, but I certainly stand in support of the amendment in terms of trying to ensure that the $21.8 million is accessed. I did share with the good speaker about what if in fact additional ARRA funds or other resources become readily available to the Department of Education for additional projects, but if you look at the total picture, when you're looking at ARRA funds of $70 million and then plus this $21.8 from the school construction bonds, then obviously we're looking at any expenditure over the course of the next two, two and a half years, hopefully that would upgrade and address some serious concerns with facilities in our Department of Education schools in the community. So, you're looking at anywhere from $90 million that could conceivably be expended to address, 70 plus 21.8, address facility requirements in terms of the ARRA funds plus the school construction bonds. So, I stand in support of this, but the concern, the question that I did raise was what if additional resources become readily available, let's say in 2012? And she did share with me that there could conceivably be an additional 10.8 available in 2012. The question now is capping that figure to not allowing that flexibility going in 2012, is $90 million sufficient to address all of our education improvement requirements? And I think that that's perhaps a general question that I'm definitely not addressing towards the Chair of Education, but it's conceivably within the next two years, three years, will that be sufficient to make sure that our schools and our children are safe and are properly educated in a good, safe environment? So, I wanted to share that with you, and I guess because of your bewildered look, I'll step back from my initial comments in regards to linking it with the $2.9 million. I just wanted to look at that and figure out exactly where the reduction could be, what the interest rate could be in terms of the school construction bonds, because even with the figures that the good speaker provided earlier of acquiring anywhere from up to 21.8 at $2.9 million, could conceivably bring us to $31 million or 36. Even looking at those figures and looking at the requirements of the department, I certainly hope that any restriction does not prohibit us from being able to access additional resources at very low cost interest rates that could otherwise be utilized by our educational system. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Any other senators wish to be heard on this? Senator Pangolinan, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly realize the question, but I think it's absolutely appropriate that the cap is done here, because if we didn't cap it, then that means, as the good speaker says, then we could take $40 million for Ukodu alone, and that's not what we're wanting to do. If we have additional funds, then we need to authorize the, you know, acquiring those funds, but then we also have to decide where the money's going to be applied to. So, this only reflects the limitation on the Ukodu, not our ability to access any additional funds that may come along. So, I do understand the desire to continue to make resources available to access funds if we get them, but I don't think we want to be putting $40 million into Ukodu, you know, and have a 2,600 pupil campus. I mean, those are the things that we were talking about yesterday, and we're going to add additional capacity to Ukodu, we're doing it up to 2,200. If we put $40 million in there, you know, we're going to waste the money, because we just don't have or don't need to and want to put that kind of overcrowding even in a facility like a brand-new facility. So, if we do get additional money, we'll look at where that's best done, maybe it's a refurbishment of GW, and if we kept it in here, then everything's devoted to GW, I mean, to Ukodu, and we couldn't redirect the additional funds or the leftover capacity in reducing this lien to GW except for another statute. So, it just, I think, and I certainly realize that, you know, we're trying to maximize the resources, local resources to leverage against available federal resources, and this maximizes that, reserves the additional capacity. Should we, and Congress extend ARRA funding for other programs, then we have that additional capacity to decide where best to deploy it. So, I understand the concern, I think this resolves that, and it doesn't, it actually enhances our ability to access any additional capacity that might come down the line with regards to ARRA funding.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Any other senators wish to be heard on the Juan Pat amendment? Seeing none, there any objection? Hearing no objection, so ordered. Are there any other amendments to Bill 413 that any member wishes to make? If not, I will recognize the author for closing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to thank all of our colleagues, you know, everyone here who have contributed to the design, you know, and the crafting of the legislation, and also, and yes, even those outside of our halls, outside of our office, because we had to work very closely with some of the financial individuals at GITA, and even at the time when Bond Counsel was here, to be able to, I was able to give him the copy of the legislation to review and provide, you know, some comments on the bill to make sure then that this is something that they themselves will be able to work with and go out then and apply for the school qualified construction bond. They have actually worked with this for some time, they know that there are some states who are actually taking advantage of this, because then we don't, you know, have to pay interest on our part because of, but rather that you'll be at a low interest. And even the savings that I had mentioned earlier, anywhere between $900 to $1.2 million, we could realize even more savings because this is really under ARRA, that the rate similar to the USDA loan could very well go down to 4 percent, and we're hoping that that would be the case, and as a result of that, there would be definitely more monies in which the government will be able to realize and appropriate out, yes, for other school projects. Mr. Speaker, I have to say that since I came into this legislation, the 23rd Guam Legislature, that has been my one whole drive was how then can we build schools? You know, I haven't come from the Department of Education as a retired administrator, is that, you know, I was always trying to see how can we replace some of our really old schools, how can we retrofit them, how can we renovate, you know, our schools? And that's always been a problem, because the government has had very limited funds to be able to do that. Many of our schools were built by, at that time, you know, with the federal government, before the government was actually turned over to the people to be able to govern itself. And then Southern High School was the first school in which Governor Ada had actually built out of our local funds, Timuning Elementary, then the four new schools now that we're now occupying were paid by Compact Impact monies. But in terms of direct funding now coming from the government of Guam to actually pay will be the rebuilding of JFK, and now will be the expansion of the Northern High School. So, it's really a big step for our public school children, it's a big step even for our colleagues here who know that we are really financially challenged, knowing that, you know, we are not going to have, you know, all the monies that we had hoped to bring in, and what the military is saying should start already coming in, we're not seeing those monies come in. So, we're having to fend for ourselves and take care for ourselves, although it's in the guise of having to go out and borrow, but, you know, what better way than to borrow than, of course, to be able to build these schools? The unfortunate thing, yes, is for 30 years, and it would mean that it won't be just us paying for this, it'll be our children who will continue to pay for it, and even our grandchildren who'll be paying for this, but, you know, but the bottom line is that I think we're going to have additional classrooms now to alleviate some of the overcrowding in the northern side of our island, and I thank my colleagues, and I really hope that, you know, when we do finally vote for it, that we will get unanimous support for this. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion?
My motion then is to please send Bill Number 413 to the third reading file.
To voting file?
Yes, thank you very much.
There being no objections, so ordered. Can we take a short recess to determine how many committee reports we have ready for
The legislature, the legislature has called to order, can you please pull out Bill Number 394? And I'd like to recognize the author, Senator Frank Blosz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place Bill Number 394-30COR to the third reading file, but I'd also like the opportunity to speak on it.
Yes, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 394-30, it's a relatively simple bill, but what it would provide is that it would give some parity to those limited liability companies that we have on Guam in line with the recent adjustments or enactments of some laws that have amended our Guam business laws. And I want to thank the good senator and my colleague from Baragada, and the corporations chair, as well as the oversight chair for the committee that oversight on this bill, for their support in this thing. And again, it's just to bring parity to our business license model on Guam in relation to limited liability corporations, keeping them in par with corporations on Guam as well.
On the amendment or the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Briefly, Madam Speaker, I want to certainly support the bill. The bill basically brings the duration of the limited liability company as well as as well as the number of directors required to form a limited liability company to be in conform, to be on parity with the formation of regular corporations and limited liability corporations. We have redrafted our laws and revised our laws and updated our laws on the formation of corporations and companies and entities wishing to do business to provide greater options to our local residents as well as companies who are coming in from outside and wish to do business on Guam. The easier we make it to form companies on Guam, the better for our tax base, because what you can have happen, Madam Speaker, when you make it difficult to charter companies on Guam, is that they end up becoming, coming in and chartering themselves as a subsidiary, they don't incorporate on Guam, they don't charter on Guam, they get a business license on Guam. And if we got these companies who wish to do business on Guam to be domesticated companies on Guam, domestic companies rather than foreign companies, then we have greater ability to monitor them, greater ability to regulate them, and greater ability to ensure that they comply with the local requirements of doing business on Guam, and of course, keeping the revenues here on Guam. So, it really does not only provide this greater flexibility in terms of options, it makes us more business-friendly, and we need to consider these type of ease with the many options that are available and many jurisdictions that are available to these companies who need to operate on Guam of chartering and domesticating elsewhere. If we can get them here, as the good senator, for example, from, and our vice speaker has continually articulated, we need to get these people to be, whose situs is on Guam, so that when they, when they, there's no question about where the revenue that they're getting from these different contracts, most especially in the military contracts, there's no question who is entitled to that revenue in terms of which jurisdiction shall it be attributed to, and which jurisdiction has the authority and the right to, by extending the privilege of operating on Guam to that tax liability that they have. So, the more we make it easier to form companies on Guam, the greater our opportunity to enhance our revenue base and enhance our regulatory reach to these companies. And so, this is one of the changes, it may seem, you know, very simple or very, very non, it just like, it doesn't actually do anything, it actually does a lot. It continues the progress we've been making by redrafting our corporate laws and redrafting our laws related to doing business on Guam, and redrafting our laws to ease the formation of these entities here on Guam, and of course, contribute to our community. So, I thank the good author of the bill, and certainly, of course, the good chair of the committee for moving forward. and certainly, of course, the good Chair of the Committee for moving forward on this. And I think it's a good thing for us and a good thing for our community from both the business community, those wishing to do business on Guam, those doing business on Guam, gives them greater options. It's also kind of becoming critical because what we've done is we've already formed limited, authorized the formation of limited liability companies. And when we originally made that change, that's almost 20 years ago. And when originally enacted, which, you know, I was one of the the main sponsor of in terms of doing that, when we did that, the lifespan of the limited liability company was 30 years. And so these companies who have formed during that time are now coming up to the end of their lifespan. And so they have to make decisions and incur costs in terms of where they want to go. This allows them to continue operating in the structure that they've chosen as best fitting their needs as business entrepreneurs, as business entities, to enhance their ability to operate and maximize their ability to make profits. And of course, the government then gets its taxes on those profits. So I want to thank the good author once again, thank everyone for their consideration of this bill, and on behalf of the author, ask for support of this piece of legislation.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, recognize Senator Tonyada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of bill 394. As the previous speaker said, the good Senator from Baragata, you know, it brings opportunities, and that's what we're looking for here in our home island is opportunities. And if this is able to expand our businesses, to come out and venture this way and charter this way, then, you know, it's beneficial both to the government and to the people of Guam. And I'd just like to thank the author, Senator Frank Blosz, for including me on this and having me at a call with her. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator Ada. Senator Ugon, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, and good morning, Madam Speaker. I too would like to stand in the, in support of this legislation. I think enough has been said in terms of trying to ease the process and to allow for individual businesses, whether they be limited, limited liability companies, LLCs, the opportunity to be able to establish themselves. And just for the information of the community, when we're looking at formation, there's one amendment that at this point in time, the law allows and requires two or more persons to form a LLC, limited liability company. The amendment is to reduce that figure to one or more persons so that in fact, there can be a greater ease in terms of being able to facilitate the establishment of that company. Also, Madam Speaker, when we look at fostering the business environment, I think it comes at an opportune time in anticipation of just the impending military buildup. I think that if we just go into the record books and we take a look at how many businesses have established or have acquired a business license to conduct business on Guam just over the course of the last eight to nine months, I think that that would show that in fact, there's a much greater interest in our environment and in our economy in terms of the anticipated activities with impending military buildup. I also would like to say that in addition to that portion of our economy, that we can continue to anticipate an increase in a very strong and vibrant tourism industry, primarily because I think that they can both work together, work well together in one particular environment. So I want to stand in support of this, Madam Speaker, and because our good Speaker, one of the previous speakers, has always been a strong advocate for business activities, I'd like to move that Speaker Ben Panglinen to be placed as a third co-sponsor of this legislation.
And that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you. Any other speakers? There being none then, so on the motion to Senator Blosz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate all the comments made by our colleagues on this thing. I also want to continue to extend my gratitude to my co-sponsors, Senator Tonyada and also Senator Ben Panglinen, as well as, you know, the good Chair from, the Oversight Chair. I have no objections if he has no problems with it in making him a fourth sponsor to the bill. Motion for that.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you. So ma'am, again, continue my motion to move it to third reading.
So on the motion then, without any objections, so ordered. I'd like to recognize Senator Ugon on bill 410.
Good morning again, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much for facilitating the discussion on bill number 410. And just so, for the information of the community at large, just to read the title, it's an act to restore the Community Health Centers Council's authorization to access and expend funds from the Community Health Center revolving fund and to ensure accountability by requiring monthly financial reports and an annual audit. I think that in this particular case, the legislative body, this legislative body in its wisdom, wanted to move in the direction of requiring that in fact, any appropriations or any funds out of this community health center, that it require an appropriation mechanism by this body. And one of the things that the board members had requested, that was back in April, had requested that in fact, we step forward and try to reconsider that only because they were requesting direct access and flexibility in terms of some of the process that they have recently been able to implement. There's a pharmaceutical purchasing program that the community health centers had recently availed themselves off and participated in. I believe it was back in January and February. And part of that program is timely remittance and payment of obligations. And in this, in this case, they requested consideration as it applies to the flexibility with the funds, and this would provide them that flexibility. But I think there's the exchange in terms of trying to allow that, Madam Speaker, was the incorporation of appropriate reports to the Finance Committee Chair, to the Legislature, as well as to the appropriate entities, and also inserting that this particular community health special fund be included in any annual audit of the government of Guam proceeds fund. So it does provide for those two particular requirements above and beyond some of the other requirements of special funds. And I think that that was perhaps the discussion in terms of how they were amenable to moving in this particular direction. I'd like to ask your consideration, Madam Speaker, and the members of this body, if in fact, they would consider supporting this legislation because I think it also maintains a sense of accountability in terms of the use of the proceeds on a monthly basis, and those reports will be a part of the requirement by law. And the members of the board had absolutely no problems in terms of providing that information, both the revenue, revenues collected as well as the expenditures of these funds. Madam Speaker, aside from that, I'd like to request consideration of the body if by any chance, Speaker Ben Panglinen can be added as the second co-sponsor of bill number 410. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ugon. So on the motion, are there any other speakers? So on the motion then, to send down to the third reading file without any objections, and so ordered. Thank you, Senator. It's now 10, almost 10:30, few minutes still, and I understand that there is this unveiling or of a Chamorro airline. So therefore, we're going to recess because many of the members will be attending. And please be back at 1:30 this afternoon, we are in recess. Good afternoon. The legislature is back in session. And we're continuing on where we left off, and we are down to, before we start up, again, the whole cycle of bills, we are now down to 424. So the Vice Speaker, you recognize. 424. No, see, we were going down the line, then we go right back up again. That's how we were discontinuing in the, in the order of the bills that we have.
But I think if she wants to go with... How long is 414 going to take? Have you guys agreed? Madam Speaker, I defer to 414 right now. Hopefully, we can get that out. That's the lowest all for few. It's not because I'm one of the co-sponsors, but...
Okay, so 414 then, I recognize...
In the interest of...
The author.
As one of the other colleagues, commentee.
Okay, so 44, I recognize then, the author, Senator Titegri.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the Vice Speaker for allowing me to bring this forth. It's very simple, Bill. Madam Speaker, I move that bill 414, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Natural Resources, and Federal and Foreign Micronesian Affairs, be accepted by this body?
It's already on the budget, so the third reading file.
Okay, and Madam Speaker, I move that substituted bill 414 be moved to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
You may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, basically what bill 414 will do is to provide cleaner, cleaner air to our environment, and at the same time, to provide the businesses and other vehicles that use diesel fuel on our island to be able to retire the older ones or the broken ones, and to be able to bring in the new ones. And I'd like to explain some of those. Ambulances, school buses, fire engines, pump trucks, bucket trucks, trash trucks, tour buses, cement trucks, trailer rigs, dump trucks, tow trucks, and all diesel fuel. If we don't use ultra-low sulfur diesel on Guam, we will be forced to buy only diesel vehicles made before 2007. Bill 414 is simple. It does two things. It requires that all diesel fuel imported for use on Guam as of January 1st of next year be ultra-low sulfur diesel. And two, it recognizes the work of Guam EPA's Work Group to make this happen. Now, we've had two meetings on this topic, Madam Speaker, roundtable discussion on July 19th, and a public hearing on the bill last week. I recommended Chairman Rispio and his staff, especially, I recommend them, not recommend them, but commend them for their work, Stephanie especially, in helping this bill get to the floor. We have heard many reasons, Madam Speaker, why we must delay the transition of ultra-low sulfur fuel. And I and my staff and the committee staff and the business community of Guam have provided answers that will end any more excuses. We were told that the switch to ultra-low sulfur diesel will require consumers or gas station to add lubricity additives to the ultra-low sulfur fuel. We discovered that such lubricity additives are routinely added during the refining process. We were told that some older engines will not work with USDL, ULSD. Consumers of diesel fuel from the transportation industry, Madam Speaker, and Guam Power Authority have told us that the manufacturers of their equipment said that there will be no problem in using ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel in their engines. We were told that ultra-low sulfur fuel diesel will be significantly more expensive than high sulfur diesel fuel. At the roundtable meeting we had, Madam Speaker, GPA stated that the cost difference is four cents per gallon. Last week, it was three cents per gallon, in Singapore today. And both grades come now at the same cost, and from fluctuating, Madam Speaker, it's showing now it's going down even further. As in the Asian area is also going to ultra-low sulfur fuel diesel in other countries. Australia has already implemented ultra-low sulfur diesel in their country, as well as Indonesia, as well as Japan. They too, Madam Speaker, are being conscientious of our environment, and so shall we. We were told that ultra-sulfur fuel content is not the only obstacle in producing fuel for Guam, and that the total refining process must meet US Department of Transportation specifications. We discovered that all ULSD meets specs for the Department of Transportation and Japan, which manufactures its vehicles for export to the US. Madam Speaker, here are the facts. All vehicles manufactured after 2006 that meet the US Department of Transportation specifications for sale in the United States and its territories must use USLD. This means that our businesses can't buy any diesel-powered vehicles that are Department of Transportation compliance that are built after 2006 unless we sell ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel. Not a single gas station on Guam has two tanks to sell two grades of diesel. The gas companies told us that it will be expensive to distribute two grades of diesel. The size of our community means that we can only afford to sell one single grade of diesel. The federal law that requires the US and its territories to switch to ultra-low sulfur diesel was passed in 2002. And it took effect, Madam Speaker, in 2006. All the industries that produced or used diesel are aware of the implications of what USDL, US, ULDS available at the pumps. Madam Speaker, that means these gas companies knew that in 2006, when implementing the ultra-low sulfur fuel diesel in the United States, that it will trickle down to other US territories or destinations. So they were very well aware of this. It is now 2010, Madam Speaker. We are behind. We are behind to be a part of going green, a part of our economy growing, a part of our environment, protecting our environment, most especially. Now, Madam Speaker, it was brought to the attention of many of the people that came to the roundtable discussions were private business owners, people like MCV, Turtle Tours, and some other agencies. And you know, Madam Speaker, that one of our largest revenues that comes into the island is through tourism. And these buses that take them from one place tourist destination to another tourist destination, these buses are breaking down, Madam Speaker, and they're causing the tour agents to constantly fix them. And you and I know what it costs on mechanical charges when you have to repair your car, let alone a huge bus. Once ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel comes into the island, not only will the buses currently that are on the island able to use that type of fuel, but we're not going to see that exhaust when you're driving right behind one of those big buses and that black smoke coming out of the buses. That's going to be substantially lower than what's happening right now. But most importantly, that these buses will also run more efficiently. Lastly, Madam Speaker, the ability for them to change out their older buses is most important. The United States no longer manufactures vehicles that can take high sulfur diesel fuel. They now all manufacture engines that take the ultra-low sulfur fuel. So without it, Madam Speaker, we stand to be stagnant. You know, we cannot be able to replenish our school buses if they break down. And most especially, you remember when we had the problem with the ambulances, the five ambulances? And during that roundtable discussion, it was brought up, the ambulances broke down because they were made after 2006 and they were using high sulfur diesel fuel, which automatically, Madam Speaker, voids the warranty on these vehicles. Thus, they broke down. Five, two are working right now. They're still putting these high sulfur diesel fuel in there, but the mechanical cost in that to flush out the engines after every three months so it still can get on the road is much higher in cost than if we had ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel. Madam Speaker, I had letters from, from other gas companies with their questions, and, you know, I've actually been known now to be called the ultra-low sulfur diesel queen, to know all the questions in regards to that. But Madam Speaker, it's time that we step up protecting our environment and to be able to provide the ability to purchase newer vehicles, to replenish the older ones. And this, Madam Speaker, will help do that. vehicles, to replenish the older ones, and this, Madam Speaker, will help do that. So I ask my colleagues for their support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Titegri on the motion, the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. There, there really is nothing that I can add more than what the main sponsor has added as it relates to the use of low sulfur fuel as it relates to the vehicles itself. My interest in this has stemmed more from my concern about the health and safety of our children. Um, as you know, I live in Petey, and there are days that I drive home and I know when, when things aren't burning correctly down at the, the power plant. And, um, as an educator, I'm sure you know that, um, at least when I was family court judge, I was told that Rios, which is now Petey Middle School, or whatever the new name is, I think it's now Rios, it used to be Petey Middle School, always had the highest incidence of absences because of, um, lung, different lung diseases. Um, and, and though I'm not a doctor, I can postulate that it has everything to do with the fact that the air in that area is just not clean from their proximity to the power plant. I know for a fact that if you walk around the veteran cemetery and you look at the brass plates and you see the pockmarks in it, you know that that's from the acid rain from some of the, um, things that are coming down. And so I, I want to ask and plead with, with, uh, with the members, uh, of this legislature to assist in getting this legislation through. We've got to do what we promised, uh, and I'm embarrassed to admit that I was the one that negotiated the initial, uh, the initial, uh, deal for the, for the power plant, uh, 30 years ago. And we got the exemption for the, for the, um, for not ha- not having to, to burn low sulfur, um, for certain days, but I, I know that they're not, they haven't been complying. And I, I feel bad about the fact that our children have been suffering as a consequence. Um, and so I think if we can bring everybody into the 21st century and be able to find cleaner fuel to burn at our plants, cleaner fuel for all the traffic that we're going to have in the, in, in the coming years. And, um, I'm very sensitive to it because, uh, driving around in a low car, um, I, I get all the exhaust from all the buses and, and everything else. And, but, uh, I'm old and it doesn't matter, but the young kids that are in the schools, especially the schools that are near the, the, uh, the, uh, the power plants, the schools that are near some of those, um, uh, uh, fast-track generators that burn the diesel, um, we've got to do something about making sure we change that fuel. And I think this bill is the first step to that, to making sure that everybody, that the only thing that's brought into this island is low sulfur fuel for the safety and the health of all, all of our kids. So I ask for everybody's support on this bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, Senator Agun, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do stand, and I'll make this fairly brief. I think the sponsor of the legislation had already highlighted, uh, the intent behind this. I think that when you have an opportunity to be able to perhaps visit other locations and you see the nature of the, uh, whether you want to call it a smog or, or the pollution in certain jurisdictions, I was in Denver, Colorado for a number of years, and it, the city of Denver is in between two major mountainous, two major mountains in that particular location. So one of the challenges just in that community alone was to be able to consciously continue to look for ways in which they can maintain cleaner air by virtue of the emissions being released by vehicles and automobiles and whatnot during the course of my stay there. And that was 20 years ago, Madam Speaker. So in terms of looking at that particular scenario, having recently returned from a particular city where in fact, on a daily basis, people are exposed to some of the challenges of, of, uh, an unclean air to some extent, I think it bodes well for Guam to be able to, to take incremental steps in terms of ultimately continuing to push and advocate for clean environments. I think we find ourselves not only in an island paradise, but we're very fortunate that, uh, we are surrounded perhaps not necessarily only by water, but blowing winds that, that apparently continue to allow our community to be exposed, our people to be exposed to wonderful, clean air. And we want to continue to do that to our part as a part of this global environment. So I stand in full support of this legislation. And for the common folks out there, you know, when you think about ultra-low sulfur fuel diesel, this was an issue, I'll close with this, Madam Speaker, that I had spoken to a, a younger generation, an individual attending the University of Guam today, and, and this individual, uh, not today, but a, a student at the University of Guam, had brought up to my attention and questioned about why would the legislature want to consider legislation like this other than addressing some of the, the other concerns. And I shared with him that just in the last three days, that this body has been dealing with educational issues, cultural issues, language issues, and a number of the, uh, very critical concerns of our community, but that the preservation, uh, and of our environment and being able to contribute, contribute to a cleaner island community is also an obligation of our people. And, and by virtue of adopting this particular legislation, it not only recognizes that there are several businesses that continue to use the, the existing, uh, requirement in terms of diesel, but then eventually there's going to be that transition, and it recognizes and it provides these businesses with ample time to be able to adopt that and to implement and to comply with some of these requirements here. So just sharing that with this student and, and letting this individual try to share the perspective about the environment, sometimes it's not something that we see immediately in terms of returns, but over time that we will be able to realize some of the actions and the decisions that we ultimately make. And I walked away, away from that conversation with this individual, understanding the nature of why we pass legislation such as this, because it's not only for today, but it's most importantly for tomorrow. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Agun. On the motion, Senator Tom Ada, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, yeah, I, I, I support in principle the, the idea of, uh, setting a milestone to, to, um, to stop the importation of high sulfur diesel. And when Bill 414 was initially introduced, it was really a simple one-page bill that said, effective January 1st, 2011, um, high sulfur diesel will no longer be imported into Guam. And I certainly was fully on board with that bill. But the substitute bill that we have basically says that, uh, we will study it more. This, there's this task force. They will study it more, and, uh, by December of 2010, they will then give their recommendation as to whether the January 1st, 2011, uh, deadline, uh, is a feasible, uh, date to establish. So in essence, we're basically saying in so many words, let's just hold back everything, let's go back and study it some more, and then we'll find out in December if we're going to, uh, uh, stop the importation effective January 1st. Well, that creates a lot of problems. Uh, first of all, you know, the suppliers who are bringing in fuel from Singapore need a little bit more lead time, uh, to be able to plan as to how they're going to deplete their current stock and placing the orders for the low sulfur diesel. Um, it also, uh, delays the planning of the companies out there. For example, MCV came in at the public hearing and indicated that basically what they're running on is a fleet of old vehicles that run on old diesel engines, and, uh, the maintenance cost for those vehicles is just starting to, uh, to, to really increase, uh, unacceptably. But they cannot order replacement vehicles because all the engines, diesel vehicles that are coming out of the factories now, um, are being designed to, to burn ultra-low sulfur diesel only. And the factories will not send, uh, vehicles out to Guam, uh, knowing that we are not, we, we cannot assure the supply of ultra-low sulfur diesel. So obviously, you're probably going to have somebody like Ford who's not going to send vehicles out here, because when their vehicles start falling, falling apart and, and, and are not performing, it's going to give Ford a black eye. So they're basically saying, we're not going to supply it. And so we're depriving then the companies out there who want to, um, renew their, their vehicles, uh, but cannot do so because they cannot get the fuel that they needed. Now, um, at the public hearing, EPA, of course, was on board with the idea of, um, stopping the importation of high sulfur diesel for environmental protection reason, reasons. The business community, uh, was on board. They supported the idea because the maintenance costs of the old diesel engines, uh, were rising unacceptably, and, um, to the best of their knowledge, uh, if they, if we brought in ultra-low sulfur diesel today and that was the only thing available for them to burn, the existing stock of vehicles that they have can still operate on, um, the ultra-low sulfur diesels without having to make any kind of retrofits to their engines. Uh, but it doesn't work in the reverse, of course. Uh, you cannot use the high sulfur diesel on, uh, engines that are manufactured to burn, um, ultra-low sulfur diesel, uh, as was evidenced by the ambulances that the fire department had, uh, which eventually, uh, short a pre-, um, experienced a premature death because they were burning the wrong kind of fuel. Um, there's also the concern about the impact on the neighboring islands. Uh, some of the statistics, 2009 statistics regarding diesel fuel, um, during the year 2009, uh, there were 22 million gallons of diesel that were brought in, uh, by the petroleum companies. Seven million gallons of that stayed on Guam for consumption by, uh, local consumers. The other 15 million gallons was exported back out for consumption, uh, to, uh, burn off the power plants at, uh, in the CNMI and in the rest of Micronesia. So obviously, there will be an impact on the neighboring islands, um, if then the cost of this fuel is going, now the cost of their fuel is going to increase by possibly as much as five cents per gallon. So the impact on the neighboring islands, the concern for that is, is, is of course a very valid concern, uh, because they would be impacted by that. But again, uh, I think that's, uh, somewhat, uh, nullified because of the fact that aside from the cost, aside from the additional cost, um, the, the, um, what, whatever it is that they're, that they're operating that uses diesel will still be able to continue operating, uh, using the ultra-low sulfur. Um, now, there was the other concern that was raised by the current primary supplier for diesel fuel, who said that, you know, January 1st is really, um, a little too aggressive, it's not feasible, we need to do more studies, more studies, and study, and study, and study. Um, but then, a competing supplier, um, basically, I guess, saw this coming down and has taken the initiative to be able to bring in ultra-low sulfur diesel and be ready to supply, uh, ultra-low sulfur by January 1st, with or without a mandate. Um, given that, um, given that revelation then, I thought that was, that was sufficient for me to decide that, that, um, January 1st deadline, uh, we should maintain that. Uh, we certainly don't want to get into a position, if in fact, we need to do more and more and more studies, um, we don't want to get into a situation where we arbitrarily and unilaterally say January 1st is going to be the deadline, after that, no more, uh, high sulfur diesel. And, and then come January 1st, we find out that, uh, we don't have any diesel because the law does not allow them to bring in high sulfur and for whatever reasons. But it kind of puts me in the comfort zone that there is in fact a competing supplier, a major supplier, that is ready, uh, to be able and is, is actually planning, uh, to be ready to supply, provide, uh, diesel fuel, ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel to the market, uh, come January 1st. Now, it's one thing to establish a deadline of, say, January 1st, and from that point, the only diesel fuel that gets brought in then is only ultra-low sulfur diesel. We're going to need after that time then, some transition time, uh, to, for, to enable the system to cleanse itself out, to deplete the high sulfur diesel and cleanse out the system, uh, so that in the end, after a period of time, what you have is actually then this ultra-low sulfur diesel, uh, that can be used to operate the vehicles out there, uh, without, uh, affecting the warranty and without causing premature breakdowns. Um, some people would argue, you know, it takes three months to cleanse out the system, others would say six months. I say, give them the benefit of the doubt. If it, if they think it's six months, fine. But there's got to be the recognition that there's a requirement to have a transition. There's also, I think, a need to, uh, for purposes of consumer protection and to provide the consumers out there the confidence that, yes, now we have available in the market ultra-low sulfur diesel that they can safely burn in their vehicles, uh, that there should be a requirement on the part of the supplier, the wholesale and the retail supplier, the Shell Oil, uh, the Shell Petroleum Company and the, and the gas station in East Agania, to be able to get their tanks certified and be able to show a certificate that in fact what was tested and what's in those tanks is the ultra-low sulfur diesel that contains 15 parts per million or less. And so, uh, and I think that that, uh, requirement and that responsibility should be placed on those suppliers to be, to go out there and hire a certified testing company, which they hire today to test their fuels, to properly sample their fuel tanks, test those fuels, uh, when they bring in fuels from Singapore to ensure that they are getting what they are paying for. And so, um, that's, that's going to be, um, that, of course, I would like to proffer an amendment that will add a new section that will require, uh, basically, will add a new section that will read as follows. And I got the amendment here, and maybe if I can just read it out, it's, it's real simple. And basically, the amendment will read, "All bulk storage tanks," those are the tanks that you would find down at the old Gorko, those big, you know, million-gallon tanks. That they, they store the fuel in there in bulk. So those tanks and the tanks that you find at the gas stations used to store diesel fuel intended for sale or resale shall be sampled and tested. So what that does then is we don't want to go out there and test every tank that, that's, you know, that has diesel fuel in it. For example, you got Black Construction, they probably have a thousand-gallon tank that they use to store their diesel, which they went down to Mobile Oil to buy so that then every morning their trucks can go by it, get fueled up, and, and then, um, and, and then go out into the field. Those tanks, I say, do not need to be tested. But the tanks where the, uh, Shell gas trucks, uh, top off at, uh, those tanks, those source tanks should be tested to, to certify the cleanliness of that fuel. And finally, the tanks down at, uh, the East Agania Mobile Gas Station should also be tested to ensure that what's coming out of those pumps is clean fuel. In my mind, we only need to do that once. Once it's been certified, I, I think it's, I'm going to put good faith in the oil companies that they're going to continue then just providing, um, um, the required ultra-low sulfur diesel. So going on with my amendments, that those fuels intended for sale or resale shall be sampled and tested in accordance with 40 CFR Part 80 Subpart 1, for the purpose of certifying the fuel meets the required ultra-low sulfur diesel. The, the CFR that I note, um, actually specifies in there, um, what the testing method is and the sampling method. So it eliminates the idea that you just go to a spigot and you fill up a gallon, uh, of, uh, gallon container of diesel, and then you take it and you, and you test it however you want. container of diesel and then you take it and you, and you test it however you want. The CFR in fact establishes a specific method for sampling the tanks and a specific method for testing the quality of the fuel. The, the other part of the amendment is that the ultra-low sulfur diesel certification shall be posted in a manner consistent with 40 CFR Part 80 Subpart 1, which basically says, you know, it's just like when you go into a restaurant, you, right there, when you go in the front door, you see the public health rating, it says, "This establishment is rated A." Well, when you go up to the gas pump, and I drive up there to put diesel in my truck, there should be a, a notice posted there saying, "The fuel, the diesel fuel in this tank meets the ultra-low sulfur diesel specification of 15 parts per million." And then finally, the third part of that amendment is that the wholesale and retail suppliers of ultra-low sulfur diesel shall comply with the certification of requirements, with a certification requirement no later than June 30th. So if you have a supplier that, you know, planned properly, depleted his stock before the end of the year, so that the first shipment that comes in in January is ultra-low, it's probably going to take him two cleansings and he's good to go. And then that becomes really the marketing, the marketing edge that he has to say, "Come to my gas station because I got clean fuel." So, you know, June 30th, I mean, that probably should be the milestone that by that time, the, the consumers can be assured that what's available out there is ultra-low sulfur. So this amendment, unfortunately, Madam Speaker, is, I mean, I, I think it's still relevant, but I find it difficult to support the bill as it is if we do not take the step today to say that the first milestone is January 1st, 2011, that will be the effective date for ending the importation of high sulfur diesel. So.
We're going to have to make a, have a recess and for copies of this to be made for, for the members, okay?
Okay.
Brief recess.
Yes, Madam Speaker, if anybody has a copy of my earlier amendment which had the line numbers, please discard that. And the change that I'm making is that on the new amendment, it's actually, all the language is the same except for the last sentence. Instead of placing a deadline of June 30th, 2010, to go out for the suppliers to go out there and certify what it is that they have in their tank, the language instead is being put in that certification will be required upon depletion of diesel fuel containing more than 15 parts per million of sulfur. more than 15 parts per million of sulfur. So, you know, if that takes 30 days, then, fine. If it takes 180 days, then, you know, you're just not going to get customers that require ultra-low sulfur diesel buying diesel from you until you have actually depleted that. Because we're moving towards the point where the only diesel fuel to be available on Guam will be the ultra-low sulfur diesel. So, that, Madam Speaker, is my amendment to add a new section to the bill.
So, the word then is depletion of diesel fuel containing more?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, very good. So, on that amendment, then, is there anyone who would like to speak on it? So, on the amendment without, oh, Senator Taitegui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the amendment. I just wanted to actually put an amendment to the amendment, and that is, right after samples be tested by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency in accordance with the 40, so it's tested by... Okay, no?
They don't do the testing, okay.
Okay, then I withdraw my amendment, Madam Speaker. My concern was that a person would be identified to be the one doing this type of testing. Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker, I withdraw my amendment.
Okay, thank you, Senator Taitegui. So, on the amendment, and there being no objection, so ordered. On the main motion, then, I have Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I support the intent of the legislation. I recognize that, yes, there are, and I listen intently to the...
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
I'll speak closer to the mic. I've been listening intently to the presentations provided, and I want to thank those who spoke before me because they were able to answer some of the questions that I had with regards to the legislation. I do have a little bit of a concern, though, with regards to what is provided in Section 3 of the bill, and I'm going to work backwards here so that I can help to explain what my concern is here. At the end of Section 3, it states that the task force shall report its findings and recommendations to the legislature and no later than December 1, 2010. And this is as a result of the establishment of a task force to conduct research and to look into, you know, some of the concerns with regards to the implementation of this act, or the implementation of the law that states that effective January 1 of 2011, that the only type of diesel fuel allowed to be imported to Guam for the purpose of sale and distribution is the ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel. But, that, my concern is, what if this task force comes back with findings and recommendations that would counter, or that would actually make it impossible for a January 1 implementation date? If that be not the case, what's the purpose of reporting to the legislature? What are you going to report to the legislature? And so, that's the, that's the, that's the question I have. I listened intently, hoping that I would hear as to why that was necessary. I, yes, I agree that we need to move to this type of product. I also agree that there may be some steps that are going to be taken, have to be taken. And also, you know, one of the questions that I have is with regards to, Guam is recognized as a regional hub for commodities, and, you know, one of the previous presenters had spoken to this concern as well, with regards to, you know, Guam being used as the regional hub, and the amount of diesel fuel that is actually brought into Guam, used on Guam, and then distributed elsewhere outside, throughout the region. And whether or not there's going to be that capacity and capability, and what is going to be the regional impact on that? As a regional hub that we are, maybe we have to start to look at our responsibilities in being that regional center, and what those impacts are going to be outside of that. And that's why I appreciate that this task force is being formed, to be able to study that. But what happens if the task force comes back and says, "Well, there's some difficulty in this, and therefore, we may not meet the January 1 deadline"? Then what? The question goes back to us, then, again, they're supposed to report back to the legislature recommendations and findings. For what? Why are you reporting back to us for? I think these are some of the questions I need to have answered before I can, because as of right now, I'd like to vote on the bill, but I need these questions answered.
Senator, do you want anyone to answer your question?
And if the author or somebody could yield to be able to answer some of these questions, or if I listen to further discussions on this thing, maybe it can be answered.
Senator Taitegui, do you yield to respond to Senator Blas?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and I thank my good colleague for his questions, his questions that were also brought up during the roundtable discussion, and also brought up during the public hearing. You know, with regards to this, I actually, I'm going to defer the part of the task force and its responsibility to the good chairman of Committee on Natural Resources, who will be a lot better to explain with regards to their responsibilities, as mentioned. But, Madam Speaker, you know, as far as the region is concerned, or the other Micronesian areas, that too was in great consideration. Actually, if you ask me, I would rather that we do not have any type of importation into the island of Guam for sale distribution, not just sale or distribution, just being imported into Guam, period. What kind of example are we showing to the Micronesian islands as well? But you have to remember, too, that probably the reason why that these other neighboring islands can't get the ultra-low sulfur fuel that they wanted many years ago, and have the same problems that we do on Guam here with regarding to replenishing their broken generators, or buses, things like that, they couldn't do it. They were too small. They didn't have the capacity to do this. You know, now that we have stepped up to the plate, we must show an example of, it's not just about, you know, can we not help our neighbors? Can we help them? It's about the environment. It's about what everyone's been screaming about, about a cleaner environment, and that's the road that we're going to take down. And you have to remember, Madam Speaker, as I mentioned earlier, in 2006, this was implemented in the United States, that it was going to go further into the trust territories, you know, and the mobile, not mobile, but the gas companies knew of this, and knew that it was going to happen. Now, in this bill, the substituted bill, there were some changes made, and one of them is to still allow the gas companies to house, only house, the diesel fuel that's distributed out through the other Micronesian areas. Because, Madam Speaker, the ship that comes in is too large to visit the smaller islands because they don't have the docking capabilities to provide for larger ships. So, the diesel fuel is brought here, stored in a tank, and from that tank, another smaller ship comes and distributes to the other Micronesian areas. So, this bill does not stop the ability for the other Micronesian areas to receive diesel fuel, but it also, you know, that's where I have a difficult time accepting in this, not putting an amendment to it, but because maybe now they will have the opportunity to request for cleaner diesel fuel, and to have the ability to then purchase vehicles made after 2006. And with that, Madam Speaker, I hope I did answer some of those questions with regards to that, and then I defer the remaining to our good Committee on Chair.
Senator Shisho, would you like to respond?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the good senator from Baragada has a valid concern. Unbeknownst to the author of the bill, and myself as chairman of the Natural Resources Committee, we weren't aware that there exists currently a working group. And so, when Senator Taitegui introduced the bill, what it did was, it forced this informal working group to kind of go into overdrive, and they recognized what this bill has done, and how much it's benefited them, and forced them to just focus on the idea of converting fully to ultra-low sulfur diesel. My office and her office participated in conference calls with US EPA. We also had several working meetings and a roundtable discussion. Where at that roundtable meeting, it was revealed, Madam Speaker, that GPA is already ready to convert its generators to use ultra-low sulfur diesel. The military has also expressed, Madam Speaker, that they need this island to convert to ultra-low sulfur diesel to bring in the heavy equipment necessary to support the military build, specifically the construction. The tourism industry folks, particularly those tour bus operators, was at their roundtable meeting and expressed concern that they would be supportive of this transition, provided everyone pays the same price. And so, in speaking with the author, Madam Speaker, rather than, and at the roundtable meeting, everybody agreed, rather than moving forward, they asked for additional 30 days, 60 days. So, that additional 60 days would have brought them up to October, November, and then we gave them till December 1 to be able to report back to the legislature. But rather than not, than just do away with the, and not recognize the work of that informal task force, my suggestion to the author and the members of the committee was that we give this task force some kind of mandate to continue to meet, to continue to recognize what these transitionary issues ought to be, and if in the event they come back December 1, this legislature would have 30 days to see whether or not this January 1 needs to be postponed. But there was consensus at both the roundtable and at the public hearing, Madam Speaker, that January 1, 2011 is doable. And this bill, and what this legislature would do if this bill passes and it becomes law, the author would have forced the whole issue to have, beginning January 1, we have this ultra-low sulfur diesel available here in our island, and anything but ultra-low sulfur diesel will be prohibited. So, we could do one of two things. We could just recognize the January 1 deadline and just live with it, because that would be the will of the body. Or we could do what we're proposing to do in this bill, is to recognize that informal working group, give them the mandate, and give them the requirements to do what they're already doing, and give them a venue to report back to the legislature to see if January 1, there would be a problem with that date. But they, there was consensus, Madam Speaker, they asked for three months, we said, "Well, we give you five months instead to report back to the legislature." I just didn't want us to wait, as a legislature, for another three months, for them to even come back to us and report their findings, when the writing's on the wall, and this revelation, and the whole chain of events kind of turned, when one petroleum company said that they're ready to go, with or without this January 1 deadline. And so, this is feasible, it's doable, I just didn't want to not recognize the work of the working group, and so, we provided provisions in this bill to have them have the mandate, which they had, which they're doing anyway, on their own initiative and their own accord. And so, that's my background, that's my explanation as to why there's a working group, and we want to recognize that working group, and still give them a direct link to this legislature to keep us apprised of what these transitional, transitionary issues are. And there are still a few that need to be worked out, but for the most part, there's agreement that January 1 is doable, and they recognize the sponsor and this bill for forcing them, like I said, to be a little bit more organized and focused to achieve this effort.
Senator Blas, then, were they able to sufficiently answer your questions? And you still have the floor?
No, and I want to thank the two presenters, speakers on this thing. They have been able to answer my questions with regards to this, and there was, again, the concern that I had, whether or not, was the January 1 deadline too premature? I appreciate the explanation from the good senator from the Ganya Heights, is, it provides a definitive date that you have to have, these things have to be in place, so that these decisions can be made before this timeline. And if the recommendations are that there has to be some modifications to the implementation date, then so be it. I just wanted to make sure that that's known, and, you know, we recognize that that could change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas, on the motion. Senator Palashis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think my concern is a technical, probably a technical correction that needs to be made on page 2, to be consistent, especially on line 5, page 2, pertaining, of course, to the 15 parts per million. One reads this sentence, beginning with January 1, 2011, as the date after which diesel-containing 15 parts per million or less of fuel shall no longer be permitted to be imported to Guam. I think that that's what this bill is trying to do, is to restrict it to importation of 15 parts per million or less. So, I think that it should read, for example, like this, beginning with January 1, 2011, as the date after which diesel-containing higher than 15 parts per million of sulfur shall no longer be permitted to be imported to Guam. So that, with that adjustment, then it will be consistent with, I think, on page 1, line 10, for the definition of what is low sulfur fuel.
Can we take a minute recess? Also, because Senator Addus' amendment that passed is containing more than 15. So, can we take a brief recess and try to reconcile those three sections? So, can we take a brief recess and try to reconcile those three sections? The legislature is back in session. Senator Palacios, we were on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with a small talk back here, I withdrawed the amendment so that it will be incorporated into the amendment of the author of the bill to reflect that. Thank you.
Okay. So, on the motion to withdraw, then, without objections, ordered. Thank you very much. On the main motion, I still have Senator Esposito on the list. Senator Esposito?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 414. I want to recognize the sponsor of this bill, the good gentlelady from Chalampago. And as I stated earlier, prior to the introduction of this bill, none of us here in this legislature, maybe I should just say the author and myself and maybe a few others, had no idea that there was an informal working group that was being run out of the Environmental Protection Agency together with the U.S. EPA, representatives of the military, Guam Power Authority, some stakeholders, people that have been consumers, people that would be affected by this transition to the ultra-low sulfur diesel. They kind of come together on their own to recognize that if you really want to start to address taking care of our environment, you got to use the better grade fuel. And they were, they were doing this, but unfortunately, Madam Speaker, the, the speed at which they were doing this was not quick enough. And they recognized that, they recognized that this bill has been the impetus to kind of get that group organized. There, no doubt, they've been focused, but when a group is meeting informally, although the initiative's there, if the mandate's not there, then, then that in and of itself presents problems. I think one of the delays, too, was in order for, for this transition to ultra-low sulfur diesel to work, is you have to have as many people as possible participate so that you can capitalize on the economies of scale. And so, when GPA said that they're ready to transition to ultra-low sulfur diesel, that kind of began the ripple effect to start to have people come forward and say, this is something we could do. The author has quantified, and our local EPA has confirmed, that the transition to ultra-low sulfur diesel would mean an impact of four to five cents per gallon from the current cost of diesel at today's market prices. And so, so the members of the, the bus tour operators came forward and said, you know, we'll comply. As a matter of fact, they should have done this sooner, but we'll comply provided everybody is charged the same rate so that, that it won't affect their competition and their bottom line within that particular business industry. And so, so what we've also wanted to do in this bill, as I said earlier, is rather than just say, okay, January 1st, and if you recall, the original bill would also have prohibited the distribution of, of this higher grade sulfur diesel originally. And so, there was a lot of compromises that were made, there was a lot of compromises that the sponsor agreed to. And one major factor is that we can just prohibit the importation of a high sulfur diesel, but that we can allow for that to be, I, we can allow for it to be here, but we can prohibit this, the local sale and distribution. And so, if a petroleum company right now wants to make this higher grade sulfur diesel available originally, and they want to invest in the capital necessary to have that additional storage tank, then that's their prerogative. And I think that's what, what drove us to that kind of nexus, Madam Speaker, is because one of the reasons why our local EPA was hesitant in moving is because they wanted to see how the region will respond if Guam did not allow for the, because you know Guam is where, where we received that, this diesel or the field stored here and then it's distribute regionally. Several of us in here recognize that if we allow for the distribution regionally, but we prohibit the sale locally, maybe that could be a way to get us to move forward. And you're seeing that this substituted bill recognizes that. You're also seeing, Madam Speaker, in this substitute bill, a recognition that we don't want to hurt the industry. And that if any petroleum company with their current stock or the inventory they have on island, we don't want to say that come January 1st, that, that if they have any diesel other than ultra-low sulfur diesel, they have to get that off the island immediately. And so, with Senator Adda's amendment, and his amendment to the amendment, which removed the June 30th deadline as he was originally proposing, kind of just recognizes that, that if, if a gasoline company X depletes their stock in nine months, then, and then you have another company that would deplete their stock in three months, you know, the whole private sector thinking of competition would mean that consumers will want to go buy the ultra, the better grade diesel because it's better on their engines. We also heard from Mariana's Cable Vision that have been trying so hard to upgrade its bucket truck fleets, but they couldn't bring in the new vehicles because, as we were told earlier, that newer engines, you cannot put the higher grade diesel on the newer engines, you cannot, yeah, you cannot put the ultra-low sulfur diesel, you can use it in the older engines, but the reverse is, is, cannot be done. And so, you see a lot of amendments that were made from the original bill, you see some more amendments that were made on the floor. And I think it's really a recognition of what this legislature needs to do, is to just find some kind of middle ground where our objective in the end is not diluted. And I'm happy to report that the sponsor of this bill is extremely happy in a sense that her objective has not in any way been diluted at all. By recognizing the work group and giving them an opportunity to come back to us by December 1st, kind of empowers them to continue to work and to address these transitionary issues. I just have a quick amendment that was just adopted, moved by Senator Adda. On line four, it just clarifies after the word 15 ppm, that should read "or less." Because there, because there is currently like 10 ppm diesel grade, and so, we, we just want to insert the words "or less," and then after the next 15 ppm parentheses, it should read "or less," and then, and then "more than" should be "higher than" because we're talking about quantity. Or we're talking about...
So, the two places, one is, one, two, three, four lines down where it says 15...
We're talking about grades, so it should be higher rather than more, which talks about quantity.
So, 15 ppm or less.
Or less.
Okay. And the second is the last line where it says containing more to higher.
No, then, then there's two 15 ppm's, there's another...
There's two?
Yeah, and the other one...
Where?
On the second to the last sentence.
Okay.
So, the whole sentence will read wholesale and retail suppliers of U.S. LSD 15 ppm or less.
Or less.
Yeah. Field shall comply with the certification requirement. And then change more to higher.
And change more to higher. Okay. So, there are three, and one is, the first one is 15 ppm or less on line four, and then the second to the last line in parentheses, 15 ppm or less, and then the last line is to delete more and add the word "higher." On that amendment, without any objections, then, so ordered.
My other amendment, just so that there's no confusion, that this legislature, by the passage of this bill and the signing of it into law, is very serious as a policy that January 1st is that deadline, and we don't give the working group any, we don't leave those doors open, although they do have to come back to us December 1st. Madam Speaker, on page two, line four, the last word "the," I propose that we delete the words "the," consideration of January 1st, 2011 as the date after which diesel containing 15 parts per million or less of sulfur shall no longer be permitted to be imported to Guam for the purpose of sale and distribution in Guam. So, you include, I want, propose that we delete that whole...
So, you're going to delete...
That whole item there.
On line four...
Beginning with the word "the."
The, and all of line five...
All the way up to the...
At six, and then...
Seven, all the way up to the semicolon.
Just, yes, a Guam semicolon. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, on the Esposito amendment, then, is there anyone like to speak on it? No objections to the deletion of those words? So ordered.
And then, Madam Speaker, as a final thought, although the U.S. EPA has granted Guam this waiver, we're not in any way petitioning U.S. EPA to remove that waiver if in the event, because of market conditions or some other requirements, we'd have to resort to stop the importation of ultra-low sulfur diesel and revert back to what it is already. That was a concern and a recommendation expressed to us by the local EPA. So, we're, we're recognizing that, and we're going to honor that request that they made, at least through this bill we are. And so, I just want to say that the, probably, Madam Speaker, EPA could have moved a lot quicker, but because there was no real policy decision with respect to what do we do with the region, what do, what's, what are we going to do with GPA, what are we going to do with the military? And the fact that this bill was introduced really kind of forced all of those issues on the table. So, I stand this afternoon to give the highest of accolades to the sponsor, the good gentlelady from Chalampago, and hoping that our colleagues will support this bill, hoping that the administration will sign it, and hoping that we continue to express our commitment and concern for our environment, for the environment as a means to adopting this kind of policy. So, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on the bill.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Esposito. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak before I call the author? Yes, Senator Blas, can you... Can you... You're not... Do you want to ask it? You're okay? So, Senator Taitegui, oh, Senator Spaldan, then, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this legislation. Prior to this bill, I, you know, I had asked several times, my own staff and others within the industry, why are we, why is Cabras Marine, Cabras PD Plant, Power Plant, you know, still emitting all that smoke? I mean, you know, I see it from, you see that in the day, you see it at night, you can just see it. And it's a long trail that goes out over the ocean. And one of the explanations, of course, is because we don't have access to this low sulfur diesel fuel. On top of it, another issue that's always bothered me, of course, were the tourist buses. You know, you're driving behind them and they, they belch black smoke, and I know that's been a problem for a long time. I mean, even before I was in, you know, in office, and goes years back, right? And I know that they've always been trying, they've always tried to solve that problem, even to the point where they said, well, instead of putting the mufflers down below, let's put the mufflers on top so it doesn't blow directly in. But again, in understanding now what this, what this will do, basically would help to have a cleaner burn in terms of the exhaust and what's going to be coming out of the mufflers, this fuel will definitely do just that, will help in terms of minimizing how much is going out, how much carbon emissions is going out into, into the atmosphere. Now, one of the problems, of course, you've heard the other speak, to, to some of the companies, some of the industries out there, one of the problems, especially, say, for example, for the tour bus companies, is that they have not been able to upgrade their fleet because, again, they don't have, we don't have the fuel here to be able to buy the new diesel type of engines or buses that, that require this type of fuel. On top of it, you've heard of other companies, industries, MCV was the prime example used today, saying that they could not update their fleet of trucks because they, because the fuel was not available on Guam, and so, they've had to resort to buying used vehicles just because the only fuel we have right now in terms of diesel is a high sulfur fuel. And they would like to upgrade. And then, of course, we all know that with the coming buildup, there will be a lot more construction equipment and trucks and whatnot that will be coming onto the island. And a lot of these will be, if we don't do this now, then they will be forced to use the older vehicles, and again, causing more pollution and adding to our carbon footprint in this region. So, this is very timely, if not perhaps overdue, to push the issue in terms of getting clean fuel. I understand that there could be a little bit of hardship placed in terms of the rising, this will help contribute actually to the rising cost of fuel on this island, but then there is a price to be paid with a cleaner environment that would benefit all of us in terms of our health and the health of this island ecologically. But with that, again, I just want to at least say that I do stand in support, having had many, many dealings with the agencies and the companies that we have talked about and them voicing their concerns that without this low diesel fuel, a low sulfur diesel fuel, they will not be able to invest in new equipment that they need. On top of it, we also must look at it as an impetus, because if we do allow for the importation of this fuel, and these companies do go out and buy new vehicles, then that means that our local motor vehicle distributors who do, who are in the business, will then start to benefit and see, and reap some of the benefit from, from the upgrading of these fleets, whether the bus fleets or truck fleets or whatever. And so, that's actually a good thing for Guam because then we can see actually perhaps more collection in the revenue side from the sales of these vehicles and whatnot. So, Madam Speaker, in short, I do rise in support of Bill 414. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Spaldan. Then, I would like to call on the author then to close. Senator Taitegui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to all my colleagues. I'd like to thank the good vice speaker for allowing this bill to go forth, what seemed to be very short, actually came a little bit longer, so I will keep my closing very short. All in all, GPA is on board, everyone else is on board, the military buildup coming, giving the opportunity for our local businesses to go after these contracts so that they can get ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel at an affordable cost is most important, Madam Speaker. The process in which the good Senator from Manila, who pointed out the process and the depletion was so important to understand, and that, you know, to the people who are watching, you know, on January 1st, don't think you can come, go out there and get ultra-low sulfur fuel right away and buy that new truck that takes only diesel. low sulfur fuel right away and buy that new truck that takes only diesel. It will also, that will address his amendment, it'll address the fact that it needs to be specified on the pumps, that what grade of diesel are these gas companies producing at. And with that, Madam Speaker, Senator, my good, the good Senator from Manila, had a lot of work with me, side by side, in trying to get this through, and I'd like to include him as sponsor of the bill as well.
On, on the, that emotion, then, without any objections?
And last but not least, Madam Speaker, the Chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources has been so helpful, instrumental in pushing this forward. It was so quick when we had a public hearing that it got to session four floor, and I commend him for the great work that he's doing at EPA and working with those individuals in that agency. And I'd like to thank you as well, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity, and I think I requested already to be moved to third reading file, or voting file, right?
Okay, so on that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Okay. We don't have, we don't, we still don't have any report for four sixteen, so we're going to move on. Senator Agon, let you have it. Four sixteen, I don't have it?
I have it.
Okay, it's not yet, okay, so then, Senator BJ Cruz, Vice Speaker, you're recognized in four twenty-four.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask indulgence of the body to recognize that I have distributed a, another version of Bill four twenty-four, and ask that the body accept it for discussion today.
On the motion, then, to accept.
As substituted on the floor.
Without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I want to thank you and your committee for the timely hearing of the original introduction of four twenty-four. Also, I want to thank your committee, you and your committee, for the work that you did in four twenty-four, in writing up the committee report and also proposing a substituted version of the bill. You and your committee have worked very hard in.
Third reading?
Oh, I'd like to move that the sub, Bill four twenty-four thirty COAR is substituted on the floor, be moved to third reading, and I, an opportunity to speak.
Okay, she may continue then.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This is the third iteration of the bill. The bill, as I had introduced it initially, suggested a nine-member board, completely elected at large. The committee, after hearing testimony, thought that the, maybe, the better version would be a hybrid board with seven members, three by the governor, three by the elected at large, and, and one more person to make it a seven-member board.
Four and three.
Four and three, four elected and three appointed by the governor. I understand that many of our colleagues had some concerns about the due process of denying and depriving individuals who had been publicly elected in the two thousand and ten election, in the staggered terms, from being able to fulfill their term. And so we have rewritten the bill, and the substituted version that is now before the body includes a provision that allows for the four members who were elected in two thousand and ten to completely serve out their term. The new substituted version takes the bill, I mean, the board composition from nine to seven, three of them appointed by the governor, three appointed by the, I mean, three elected at large, I mean, four elected at large. The four that are gonna be elected at large will not actually go to an election until two thousand and twelve, because we want to allow those that were elected in two thousand and ten to complete their term of office. And I believe that was a concern of a number of the members, and I wanted to assure them that we tried to address it in this substitute bill. We also were trying to find a way of addressing it. I know that some of us wanted it to be a completely gubernatorial-appointed board. We heard the testimony that was in opposition to it. We've tried to address some of those needs, and, and we thought maybe that the hybrid board, in fact, there was testimony at the hearing that a hybrid board might be the, might be the answer, and, and so we've, we've done that in this, in this substituted version. And even in the substituted version, Madam Speaker, with the three gubernatorial appointments, it's not just three gubernatorial appointments. We've not tried to be as specific as the, as the GMH problem that, from the nineteen seventies, but we did recommend that the three persons to be appointed by the governor, one would be someone who has managerial experience in a private business, in the hopes of bringing that kind of expertise to the board. The, the, the second appointee by the governor, in an attempt to make sure that parents are represented on this board, has a provision that one of the appointments by the governor be a parent of a student in public school. And a third member of the person to be appointed by the governor is to be someone who has some insight on the operation of the Department of Education, Guam Public School System, whatever the new, what their current name is, but has taught, and is a retired teacher, to give the perspective from the teacher's perspective. And, and the four that are elected at large can be whatever, you know, but we wanted to make sure that at least on the board, you have the representation of these three mindsets, as it were, and then we also have some non-voting members, and we have student, a student member, we have someone representing the union, and the board is, is at liberty on three, to add as many additional non-voting ex-official members as it may deem necessary. And so we've tried to hopefully address all of the needs, but at least tried to get this new board that's going to finally be created, to provide all the insight that we hope will, will, will need. I mean, I know people were, were very critical of my introduction of the legislation, because we've gone from all gubernatorial to all elected, and so we were hoping that this hybrid of a combination of both elected and, and appointed would give various perspectives, give the, whoever is the governor and the administration, a tie-in to the board. It does not have the majority, it's just three of the, of the seven voting members, and, but at least they would be able to represent the concerns of the administration and their, their specific backgrounds, is either retired teacher, parent, or a, a businessperson on proper business operation. I'm hoping that my colleagues will, will see that this substituted version of the elected school board, or the Guam Education Policy Board, is an attempt to try to improve on, on, on this board, and it's not what I had originally introduced, but it is an attempt to try to address the issues. I'm glad that we've been able to try to address some of the concerns of the members, and I want again to assure everyone that there will be, that the four members that won election in two thousand and ten will be allowed to serve their full term until the end of their term in twenty, uh, two thousand and twelve, and the first election of the four members of the school board will be in November of two thousand and twelve. And I'm hoping that addresses everybody's concerns, and I'm hoping for the support of my colleagues in this compromise bill to improve the Guam Education Policy Board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. On the main bill of four twenty-four as substituted, is there anyone wishing to speak on the bill? Anybody? Judy Guthert, do you wish to speak on, yes. Are there anyone else wishing to speak before? Okay, Senator Guthert, you're recognized, and then Speaker Pangolino.
This is on the bill, Madam Speaker?
Yes, on the main bill. Four two four as substituted, Senator Guthert.
Okay.
You should have had a copy on your desk, thank you.
All right, on this bill, a couple things. First, I want to say for the record that, Madam Speaker, some of you may know, some of you may not know, but I've had the opportunity to serve on three different school boards since the nineteen eighties in our territory. One that was fully appointed, one that was fully elected, and one that was sort of a hybrid board at one time. And my personal experience as a member of these boards was that the most effective board was the elected board. Now, at that time, we were called the Territorial Board of Education, and the law that guided us was very different than it is today, the law that guides the Guam Education Policy Board. The Territorial Board of Education had the tools to be able to really influence the direction of the public school system. Many of those tools do not exist today. This board has been very limited in terms of what its authorities are and what its powers are. Some of that limitation was based on, to be honest with you, demands from the federal government, that unless you do this, you won't get the federal monies. And previous legislatures responded to those demands because of necessity to identify those funds and keep those funds for our school system. Now, the reason I share this with you is just to try to impress on everyone that we've been grappling with the structure of a board of education now for over twenty years, it's more like thirty years now. And every few years, when things need addressing, changes are made. Now, here we are again at the crossroads, and I respect the work of our Speaker on this bill, and other senators, and Senator Cruz. I know they're trying their very best to help our school system. Now, I understand that there's been some accommodations in this bill to concerns, at least that I have registered, and one of my major concerns in the first version was that the current board, most of whom who were elected by their communities, would end their terms in January. But I understand that has been revised now in this new substitute bill, so that they would be allowed to complete their terms, and I like that. I don't think it's right to remove people from elected offices before their terms end. So I think that's a good thing, and I thank Senator Cruz and the Speaker for recognizing I'm not a fan of a board that is composed of elected and appointed members, because I've experienced what it's like when you have some members elected and some appointed, and then you have a governor that wants certain things done in a certain way, and tells his appointed members, I want it this way, and then you have elected board members that wanna stick with their independence and not be pushed in a certain direction because of a powerful official. And as a result, you sometimes end up with disagreements that are unnecessary and prolonged. So that is one of my concerns with reference to having a, a board with some members elected and some appointed. My true preference, to be honest with you, Madam Speaker, would be to have either a fully-appointed board or a fully-elected board, or even more important, to have boards at the level closest to the schools, which would be school boards at the schools, or community school boards, where the schools develop a board that would have the power to make decisions, and to design the budgets, and to implement the budgets, and to oversee the progress of their schools at their level. Village school boards or individual school boards, but I know we're not quite ready for that yet, and hopefully we'll move into that decentralized approach in the near future, to empower the schools, empower the parents, empower the communities, empower the mayors at the school level. Now, I noticed one of the documents that had been shared with us today was a letter written, a very well-written letter, from a former superintendent of education and a former chairperson of the Guam Territorial Board of Education, which was an elected board, and I had the privilege and honor of serving with this person when she was chair of our board, that's Gloria Nelson. And of course, all of us have a lot of respect for Mrs. Nelson because of her years of devotion to public education on Guam, because of her having headed the Department of Education, and I might say during a very successful period as the Director of Education, and then later as the chairperson of the Territorial Board of Education. You know, it was interesting, when we had the Territorial Board of Education, some of you remember when the then-governor challenged our board, went to court to try to, try to get us ruled inorganic. And then another board after that particular governor went through the same experience with a former governor, and it was very interesting, the school board basically won three of the four cases that were brought against it, challenging its organicness, challenging its authorities. The only issue that became an issue was the districts, because at that time, board members were elected by district, and the end result was that board members became elected at large after that, in order to avoid the one-man-one-rule challenge. So I'm glad to see in this bill that we are retaining a majority of elected members for future boards. In other words, the future board would have a majority of members who would be elected by the people of Guam, and then we would have three appointed by the governor. I'm not too excited about it, but it's a possibility that, you know, something we can try out and see what happens. My only concern is ensuring proper representation, and people have called me and said they're worried that the southern villages would not be able to get someone elected in an island-wide election for the school board. And that's a big concern. We need to keep that in mind as we go forward. Will this new board composed of elected members at large and three appointed members, would this be representative of all the different sectors and geographical areas of our community? Right now, we have representatives elected from the south, because they're elected Right now, we have representatives elected from the South, because they're elected by districts on the board. At any rate, Madam Speaker, I don't want to prolong this. I do have reservations. However, I am pleased and I would not even consider voting for this without this change. I am pleased that our Speaker has recognized, and Senator Cruz has recognized, that it would not be proper or fair to take away the current board members that were elected to their positions before their terms are up. So I'm pleased to see that change was made, that the current board members will retain their seats until their terms are over. And that will transition into this new system if this bill becomes law. I want to make known that I think this should only be looked at as a beginning of addressing the tremendous structural issues at the Department of Education, that we need to devolve and decentralize into community school boards at the levels closest to the schools to empower the parents and the school communities. And that will be my next focus, and I think we have some legislation in the works, Madam Speaker, that would help us respond to that need. So with that, Madam Speaker, I thank you for the time, and I'm willing to give this a chance, especially since a very well-known, versed colleague from education, Gloria Nelson, has basically said that she feels comfortable with a hybrid board approach at this time. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Senator Guthertts. I have up to speak. Speaker Ben Pangolino?
Thank you, and since this morning, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, at the onset, before I begin discussing the bill, I want to certainly thank the proponents of the bill in what they're attempting to do and what they're attempting to address. I am firmly of the belief that the proposal being presented in this bill is an attempt to continue to find ways in which we can make changes to the governance of our school board, of our school system, that results in improvements in the education of our children. And these improvements can happen in many ways, and many facets of improvements occur in terms of what we're trying to do here. We can find that we will find improvements in our facilities, we will see improvements in the curriculum, we will see improvements in teacher retention, we will see improvements in teacher pay, we will see improvements in many different facets of what it takes to build a school community that ultimately we measure in improvements in our children's test scores and their knowledge that they gain in the system and the opportunities that we provide for them in our public school system. And this debate is not unique to our community. This debate is raging and going on every single day in the different communities across our country. Our neighboring state of Hawaii is actually going through the same debate right now. And it's quite different in Hawaii, because in Hawaii, the elected school board is part of their constitution. Even back then, when the state of Hawaii was being chartered and the constitution was being written in that state, as it is in many other states, there was a realization that when it comes to the education of our children, that we shouldn't subject that to the politics of the governorship through the politics of the administration and the legislature, and a way to isolate and ensure that the only politics that plays into the decisions regarding the school system are the educational politics. And this is, of course, individuals who decide to present themselves to the public as candidates for the elected school boards in these jurisdictions. But the state of Hawaii right now is considering amending the constitution, and it's being presented so that they get rid of the elected school board and put in an appointed school board. What is kind of interesting also is that the candidates for governor now, in the past, when they weren't running for governor, supported the elected school board. But now that we have these different candidates running, we now find that they are supporting an appointed school board. I guess it's just in case they get to be governor. But what has driven the issue of education in Hawaii to the point that they're now going to consider the changing the state constitution to make the school board elected? What drove it there was the fact that this past year, the state of Hawaii, because of the budget crisis, actually went into four-day school days, I mean, four-day school weeks. They actually had closed the schools on Friday because the governor and the legislature could not agree on making any cuts to the other operations of the state government to support keeping the schools open for the entire five days. Now, the school board, because it does not have the authority to spend the money it doesn't have, had to make these cuts to the school budget, and the only way that they could actually do it was cut the school week. So they did. So for the last year, the state of Hawaii, I think for the last half of the year, they actually had four-day, they had what they called furlough Fridays on the schools. And the governor didn't want to deal with it from the political side. It's not my responsibility, it's an elected school board. The legislature said, you know, "We got an elected school board and we found, we gave them as much as we could, and they just have to work with what they have." And so the school board got stuck. And so there was a tremendous outcry in the community that the governor did not respond to the elected school board because it wasn't in her interest. She had no political interest in finding the money, making cuts elsewhere to support the decision of the school board of the four-day work week and to rescind that. And the people and the parents thought that if the governor, because now through her appointees had, it was in her political interest to cut somewhere else to keep the schools open, that that can happen when the school board is elected. I mean, is appointed by her, because now the ball stops with her. So these are the different debates that are raging on in our neighboring communities with regards to elected school board and appointed school board. If you recall, when the bill first came out, that was really one of the things I said, is how do we isolate the educational system from the politics outside of educational politics? If you recall, one of the most interesting things I recall, for example, is that one of the statistics that we have is, we all say we want continuity in the management of our schools, and that we really need continuity in the management at the superintendent level, for example, because we want somebody who's in there who knows the system, who has something at stake, invest in it, and therefore it's in their interest to operate it well because longevity, stability, and so forth. But did you know that in jurisdictions in which the school board is appointed, those are the jurisdictions that have the highest turnover of management within the school system, of superintendents, associate superintendents, and so forth? Because they respond to the whim of the governor. It's the next governor that comes in, whether or not, you know, he wants his person in there, because now it's up to him. It's no longer, you know, the prior board who's appointed, who is now is appointed by the old governor, that's their choice. I'm going to make a change, because I'm going to be on the hook. So the stability aspect is the least, in terms of management within school systems in school jurisdictions, is least stable when the boards are appointed. And if we think stability is a good thing to have, then we're going the opposite way by putting in an appointed school board. You know, Congressman Underwood and I share a story, and President Underwood now, of when he was the Associate Director of Education. He was the Assistant Director of Education. It was him and former, one of my colleagues, former Senator Pilar Lujan, were appointed as Director and Deputy Director of Education, like, right before the election for the governor. And even though these two individuals are known Democrats, they somehow got appointed by a board that was a Republican board, appointed board under a Republican governor, that when the new governor came in, who was a Democrat, it didn't matter that they were Democrats, he still fired them. So I think Congressman Underwood had the shortest term ever as Associate Superintendent of Education in Guam history. But I just say that to illustrate that when you do this, you have, you don't have the stability and so forth. Now, on the other hand, one of the statistics that we find is that the accountability is higher with regards to the expenditure of the resources when the board is appointed. Okay? That's a good thing. Less stability, but more accountability. Okay? I can balance that out. I'll have to kind of take a look and see what's more important to me. Stability? What contributes greater to the achievement of our children? Stable management or accountability of how the dollar is spent? Not whether it's spent correctly, just how it's spent, that we can say that this dollar went to buy that tire or that chalk or that book. We just don't know whether it's the appropriate book or not, but we can account for where the money ends. But on the other hand, stability becomes, is decreased. The other thing is that checks and balance. There are less checks and balance, even though we can account for it in terms of how the money is spent, there's less checks and balance in an appointed board. Because now you have the appointed board responding to the governor, and it's his, it's kind of like they do his bidding. So there's less checks and balance with regards to the educational objectives, the education mission, and things like that. So again, we got to ask ourselves, what's more important? Checks and balance, accountability, stability? Which are these elements in terms of how a school system functions under an appointed board versus an education, an elected board? You know, we always say that what we want is, of course, performance by our students. Now, again, when you take a look at what happens in these areas, the quality assessment that we have performed for our schools across the country called the Quality Counts 2010, the national education ranking of the schools and the school districts and their performance based upon these criteria under the Quality Counts 2010. Eight of the bottom 10 states, eight of the bottom 10 states in the Quality Counts 2010, national educational ranking, have appointed school boards as the oversight tool or system. So when we take a look at where they rank with regards to the criteria measured under this National Counts, Quality Counts 2010 of the school districts across the country, those bottom school districts under this criteria measurement are under an appointed board process. So what's more important? Accountability, stability, quality of the education system? If eight of the bottom 10 are under an appointed board, then maybe that's not the solution that we're looking for to improve the education of our children. Maybe elected versus appointed is not that huge of a debate. There are many things that influence then what happens here and why, for example, when we look at this Quality Counts measurement standard, that the bottom eight of the bottom 10, eight of them are appointed board. Maybe there are other factors there. Maybe they're in the poorest district in Mississippi, for example, or the funding level is the least of these. So I'm sure there are other factors other than just an appointed board. And we don't have enough, at least the statistics didn't break that up into those other criterias of why, for example, what factors exist in these jurisdictions that I could look at. I think everyone agrees that the improvements in our school system, improvements in our school system can be seen when the resources are there. We can tell the difference, for example, in our school system, back what happened in our school system, when the federal government withdrew its support of our school system. And we lost close to $35, $45 million in compact impact aid, educational aid to our school system, when the military withdrew its children from the school system, and we lost that resources. So when we didn't have that, the impact we saw in terms of what happened to the school system and its performance greatly suffered until we were able to recover over a period of years in then finding the local resources to make up for that loss of resources there. So we know funding is absolutely, elected or appointed, is absolutely critical to making improvements in our school system. I don't think anybody can debate that issue. A rigorous curriculum is necessary, and of course, the quality of our teachers and the effectiveness of our programs for teacher development and teacher enhancements. All of these things are very, very critical to seeing improvements happen. Are these things a function of an elected board and an appointed board? Do we see a difference in the focus of an elected board versus a appointed board on, for example, teacher development? Or is an appointed board more concerned about what the priorities are of the governor versus the priorities of the educational philosophy and educational approach to the school system? What is the overriding factor that would be focused on by somebody who's beholding to the governor, to the appointing authority, or somebody who's beholding in a management system, an oversight system of a board that is beholding to the electorate, the parents, the students, and the teachers, and the support staff, and the community of that? Is getting the resources more easily done by the appointed board or by the elected board? We don't know, but we do know that no matter what, without community involvement in our schools, whether or not it's elected or appointed, we're not going to see the improvements. Without the dedication of the resources needed to make improvements in not only the facility Without the dedication of the resources needed to make improvements in not only the facilities itself, but providing for the necessary supplies and materials and human resource development in the schools, improvements will not be seen. So, what is most important to this? And, am I now gonna say that if I provide the channel for getting the resources, is it easier through the appointed board? Maybe. Maybe when the governor, maybe if, for example, Linda Lingo knew that if she didn't provide those resources, that her neck would be on the line, versus insulating herself and saying, "I'm sorry, it's an elected board, I have no purview over it." Or like what our governor said here, you know, several months ago. "I'm sorry, you know, it's an elected board, I can't interfere, I, we've given them all the money they, we can, we're gonna, we don't have any more." And, if, you know, for example, it was going to be an election, and he was gonna be up for election, that if the buck stopped with him, then he would say, "I'm gonna cut the public library," or "I'm gonna cut public health and I'm gonna give it to education," because that's the bigger constituency. And so, when we take a look at these things and all of these questions we ask ourselves, then where do we come down? I don't know. I, I've supported an elected board, I believe an elected board works, I believe that it insulates the school system from the destructive part of the politics, that if any politics should be present in our schools, it should be educational politics and what is best for the children, than rather than what is best for other competing concerns I have if I was governor, and so forth. You know, not everybody's priority is education. I know we hear that, that the general public always says, you know, "Everybody that runs, say, 'Education is my top priority.'" No. We obviously know that it's not, because we've seen administrations and legislatures say, "No more." You know? We can't afford anymore, you have to work with it. But, we must, as a community, look at ways in which we can make improvements in our school system. And, that's what this bill is trying to find. Trying to find a way of making improvements, and, you know, I'm sure the proponents believe that, and I certainly, you know, have no doubt, that this structure will translate into improvements in our school system. I'm not sure that I fully agree with that. I can see the rationale behind it, but I think that that's not the solution, that's not the solution that's needed, and only that solution. I think that the fact that we have made a change in how the elected school board has been able to manage and run and guide the operation of the school system, has resulted in it being less than effective than other, than an elected board which had greater jurisdiction and oversight and authority over the school system itself. We have, we have set it up for failure in regards by continually diluting its powers, and then saying, "You can't do anything, you're not doing anything." So, again, when I take a look at it, you know, we know that if we're talking about educational standards, assessments, accountability, school finances, that an appointed board accounts for these things a little bit better than an elected board. So that, we do maybe have higher standards and so forth, but it doesn't translate into higher performance. Because when we look at the performance under the Quality Counts criteria of what is the quality of education that's being delivered by a school system, we know that, or at least the reports show, that eight of the bottom ten are under an appointed board. So, how do I balance the two? What's most important to me? Accountability, higher standards, or higher performance, greater quality, and, under the two competing proposals with regards to the way that the school board is chartered? The other thing I have is, I know that, you know, we're trying to kinda satisfy both. So, if we, maybe the three will be, will focus on accountability and standards, and the other three that's elected will focus on quality and improvement. But then, you know, is a camel the best way to do that, you know? And, again, do we now then set it up again for failure in which we now have the governor's interests by virtue of his appointees, now butting heads with people who may have a completely different philosophy with regards to what the school board should be doing and what the school should be doing? So, we now set up a system that breeds conflict and contention versus cooperation in the system, because now we have two, two sets of people beholding to two different authorities. One's beholding to the appointed authority, the other one's beholding to the electorate. So, maybe the debate, and we're trying to please both sides and account for both sides, and in the end, we're getting neither. We just get some continued debate and discussion without much progress. I don't know. I don't know what the solution is that will translate into these improvements, other than, of course, you know, as every member of this body has committed itself to, is trying to make sure that, to the best of our ability and the best of our analysis, we provide them with the best and the resources that we can afford, and then rely on the professionalism and the people to make, to translate those resources into improvements of our educational system. So, I may have rambled on much longer than I think I should have, or, you know, but it is an issue that, to me, I've always been very, very careful of, very involved in, and continue to take a look at what's happening in many, many jurisdictions, as every single jurisdiction continuously searches for the best way to improve their school systems, including the debate of how best to run it, and who best to run it, and who best to have the people that run the system select, select it, and so forth, through what has always been the tradition, appointed, elected, hybrid, no board. I'm not sure that I've run much into that kinda situation, except for the very, very small districts. But, this is the debate, it's a worthy debate, it's a debate that should happen every single day in our government of how best we can improve education, and I thank the authors of the legislation for continually putting that debate before us and the community, so that we could continually examine and determine and study what's the best way of achieving improvements in our educational system. Thank you, and Sidus Massey.
Vice Speaker Ben. Senator Tadegui, you're recognized on the main amendment, I mean, the main motion.
Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, at first I was hesitant in supporting this bill, because I do feel that we should be, should not take away the rights, away from our people to choose officials to run the largest department in our government. Our people need to be able to hold elected offices accountable, and ultimately, these board members must be answerable to the people, and not somebody else's particular agenda. However, however, this bill calls for a hybrid model of having both elected and appointed members instead of comprised of just appointed members, and that sounds to me like almost a win-win situation, in that we still have those individuals out there voted in with no, well, there's no agenda, there, I mean, no requirements, other than, you know, being twenty-five years old and a US citizen to be a part of the board. But, you take the other additional people that would be appointed, and you're looking at, where it says here on page three, "One who is employed in an upper-level managerial position in the private businesses." "The second one is a parent of a student enrolled in the Department of Education, and one is a retired teacher administrator of the Department of Education." Madam Speaker, experience speaks for itself when it comes to situations of mistakes made in the past, or things that worked before to bring to the front. Madam Speaker, it's important that we have a board that has the expertise in running businesses, running, being able to financially be accountable for. That's really important, and most especially, a retired teacher and administrator. Now, if we go for a fully elected board, we're not guaranteed any of those individuals could be part of this board, which can contribute so much toward it. We're leaving it wide open. Madam Speaker, I'm sure the author of the bill sees that something needs to be done. We've already had federal funds threatened to be taken away, or it has been suspended. We had the Evergreen Group come out here and had their recommendations on things to move forward. But, Madam Speaker, it ultimately ends with the responsibility of our education, I believe in the organic act of Guam, the governor has that responsibility. And to not let him be a part of it, especially if there is something really critically wrong that needs some funding, or emergency funding, in which he has federal funds that he can put to the Department of Education, then he needs to step up. But if we keep him completely out of the loop here, well then, why should he? You know, Madam Speaker, like I said earlier, I was really reluctant about a fully appointed board, but this, once again, Madam Speaker, brings to the table the opportunity of experienced people, and you can't say that just because they were appointed by the governor, that this individual doesn't have any morals or ethics, or really doesn't want to see Department of Education do well. You can't, we can't, you can speculate, just like someone who was elected. The same thing can apply to that person. If someone was elected in the school board and has the intentions of running for reelection, or intentions of running for another type of office, would basically do what sounds good to the people out there for the vote. Like the good speaker from Baragada said, there is so much debate that can go on with this. But it boils down to, Madam Speaker, in the last two to three years, the Department of Education needs something that would help them move forward to what all the people of Guam are hoping for, are praying for, for their children. And that is, I don't wanna say adequate, I wanna say more than adequate, education for our children of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Tadegui. I will now recognize Senator Frank Huggins, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, and Buenos dias, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, when this bill initially was forwarded to us, and we were gonna entertain it in the previous session, I had some serious reservations, and the reservations really lies with the governed. I've seen, and I've attended numerous Education Policy Board meetings in the past where, in fact, it was an appointed board. And then, having come into this body, we contributed towards transitioning it towards an elected board, with the idea that, in fact, it would be a better structure. But one of the reasons why I supported that contention on day one, Madam Speaker, in terms of moving in the direction of an elected board, is because we would give and empower the governed, in this case, the community. Now we have a proposal before us that would create that hybrid, a mix of having appointees, three members appointed by the chief executive, and then having four members selected and elected at large by the people of Guam. Interesting concept. I look at this, and I listen to some of the concerns that have been shared about the need to ensure that the chief executive is part of the process, absolutely. The chief executive is exactly that, the chief executive of the entire island community, and in this particular case, the chief executive of the executive branch of the government of Guam. So regardless as to what the circumstances are, there's no shunning of responsibilities. And you know, Madam Speaker, one excellent example is the ARA funds. Here we have a wonderful program that says sixty to seventy million dollars is gonna be readily available to the community of Guam for facility improvements to the Guam Department of Education. On the one hand, we have an elected board structure. On the other hand, we have the chief executive that has control over the sixty to seventy million dollars in resources, federal money, just by virtue of the federal law that established the ARA funds, the American reinvestment funds, and made it available to Guam. Well, you know, Madam Speaker, when you look at that process, I think it goes to say that here is a semi-hybrid process, not necessarily with the structure of the board, but in terms of looking and allocating and utilizing the ARA funds, where in fact, the two entities are working well together. Or at least, that's a perception I have. Whether they've experienced complications over the course of the last year and a half, I'm not aware of it. But I, it's my understanding that those funds, which had been dedicated to the Department of Education, the Guam Department of Education, will, and will, or has been dedicated, has been approved by the chief executive, and will continue to be directed towards the department, towards our public educational system. So this idea about an elected board not being able to work with the chief executive, it's an interesting concept, because we're seeing it, or at least I'm seeing it, work as it deals directly with funds, the funding sources. Then I look at, okay, in this case, this one statement that was made by one of our previous speakers about another proposal, "If it ain't broke, why fix it?" And I look at this, and I say, okay, there have been some serious concerns with regards to the existing structure of the Board of Education. But is it because of the membership? Is it because of the mandates that have been provided? Is it because of the authority that have been provided through the guise of the public law? And I had the opportunity to speak to a number of board members, Madam Speaker, and for those who are in the room who think of one particular name, I can almost reveal that, in fact, it's not that one person that you're thinking of, that I've spoken to, who was an incumbent member of the board. Well, this individual has shared with me that the Guam Education Policy Board is exactly that. It is a policy board, it is not a governing board. And there have been certain situations in recent past where we've expected them to govern, rather than to look at the way the structure is set up, and recognize that they were policy. They can enact policy to direct the superintendent, but not necessarily govern in terms of dealing directly with operations. And that's how the law was structured. And this individual, this board member, he repeated on several occasions, "If you want the Guam Education Policy Board to govern, then by all means you should give that authority to that board." But you know, then again, I- But you know, then again, I bring it back a step. Having seen the appointed members, board, education board, having seen elected members, and then looking and listening very intently to some of the concerns that have been raised about whether, in fact, it's a policy board or a governing board, regardless, this entity ultimately, this elijaz laturen guahan ultimately will be able to make appropriate decisions as it applies to the structure of the board as well as the relationship and the authority provided to any board, even if it's a hybrid board. So that's one of the questions that perhaps we need to ask ourselves, whether, in fact, this board will be empowered to be able to govern or is it going to be status quo in terms of maintaining its policy perspective? Because every single member who was appointed by the chief executive, in this case, the three members, certainly have to recognize that. That although they are the link between the education board and the executive branch, that they've got to be very mindful that, in fact, it's a policy board if that's how the language has been retained. But you know, Madam Speaker, there's a concern or a statement that was made by one of the previous speakers that is a concern of mine, and I shared it with our good Madam Speaker a little earlier in our conversation on this particular proposal. And I said, shared with her, and I understand that the way the format is going to be presented in this proposal is that the individuals, the four individuals who will be sitting on the board will be elected island-wide at large. That being the case, there was one of the members here who had shared a concern, which I certainly share, about the ability for our people in the South to be properly represented. And when I shared that concern with one of the members of this body, that individual said, yeah, but in this case, it's a level playing field. Kind of interesting how that's presented because, obviously, we're talking about election at large, and our people have been very generous as it applies to a Zonia boy standing here and speaking today. Because, obviously, Zonia is a portion of the Southern community. But then we look around and there is one other member in this body who's also from the South. That is a concern, a legitimate concern that I have only because the anticipated increase in population, the expedited anticipated increase in population that we know and we can see is moving in the direction even more to the North. So with that in mind, Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer an amendment for consideration by this body. And, you know, I think it's an amendment that certainly should be considered. I know that seven was the lucky number that was considered by the sponsor of this legislation in terms of the board membership, four of which will be elected at large and three to be appointed by the chief executive. But, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to expand the people's representation on the board. Rather than four, I would like to propose that that number be increased to six to allow for increased representation, especially in light of the island-wide election process. And so with that in mind, I know that it's, I don't think it's going to be too extensive in terms of proposing the amendment, but it would be on page three, line sixteen, just to change the makeup of the board. Rather than four elected voting members at large, to change that, increase that number to six members elected, voting members at large. And I would like to put that motion on the floor, that proposed amendment on the floor. Please, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator Huggan. On the amendment by Senator Huggan, does anyone wish to speak on the amendment? If not, is there an... Do you wish to speak, Senator Espaldon, on the amendment?
I may, Madam Speaker. And that's why, because, again, the amendment was proffered. To be able to say whether I will speak or not would require some thought to really weigh the consequences of whether four or six, what kind of difference it makes. Because if that is the only amendment that the previous speaker is going to make without changing the composition of what would establish a quorum as well as what would be required to be the majority vote, I mean, again, those other considerations have to be factored in if I am to speak intelligently to this particular amendment. So with that, I'm just requesting, Madam Speaker, perhaps a minute to really contemplate that. Because to not speak on it and only because of a lack of time to think about it, I think would be definitely doing us all a disservice.
I'll give you a one-minute recess.
I was trying to help the process.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank the good speaker and a number of senators who participated in the conversation offline in terms of really looking at the validity and the legitimacy of increasing the numbers and questioning whether, in fact, it's ultimately beneficial to the process. Because I understand that, obviously, seven individuals sitting at a table versus nine, you increase the nature of the conversation and the discussion. But, Madam Speaker, I want to thank also our colleagues for assisting me in this process as we look at proposing, or let me re-send that initial amendment, Madam Speaker, and if you can follow me, please. We are looking at increasing the number of voting members to six and increasing the number of members on the board to the appropriate number by two. So on page one, Madam Speaker, on line eight, to delete seven and to insert nine. On page two, because the good senator from Tamooning had shared with us about the concern about affirmative votes, as well as maintaining a quorum for the board, which are very, very legitimate issues, I would like to also propose the corresponding changes on line sixteen on page two, to six members shall constitute a quorum, and then the following number to five, and an affirmative vote of five members is required for any action to be valid. Did you want to address these, Madam Speaker, individually, or you want me to continue? Okay, continuing on to page three, Madam Speaker.
Senator Uggan, if I may, are you withdrawing your original amendment?
I thought I mentioned that at the inception of my statement, but, okay, yes, yes.
Okay. On that objection, I mean, on that motion, no objections, motion carries. We are now on page two, line sixteen, from five to six members.
Five to six.
No objection.
And line seventeen, from four to five members.
Motion carries, and then seventeen, from four to five. Any objections? No objections, motion carries.
And correspondingly, Madam Speaker, moving on to page three, on line sixteen, rather than four elected voting members, that would be six.
Line six.
Sixteen, on page three. So it would be six. So both number fours would be changed to six. So it would read, six elected voting members, period, and then six voting members shall be elected at large.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and if I can move forward to page four, because there were some concerns in our discussion in regards to any additional non-voting members, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the deletion of lines twenty-one to twenty-three, which reads, page four, the board may add additional non-voting ex officia members as needed, and terms for such ex officia members shall be determined by the board. To delete that so that, in fact, we keep the numbers to a reasonable number in the membership for both voting and non-voting members. And, obviously, this does not preclude any member from the public from participating in the public discussion section of the meetings. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the deletion of lines twenty-one to twenty-three on page four, please.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
And then, Madam Speaker, please, if I can ask, beg your pardon, just again, on page six, on line twenty, removal of board members because we increased the number of board members from seven to nine by virtue of the amendment. If I can move for that number five to increase by one, to number six. So six members, a member of the board may be removed by a vote of six members for malfeasance in office or for persistent neglect and so on.
On that motion, from five to six, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
And that particular case, Madam Speaker, I believe that our additional amendments are going to be proposed by a number of our colleagues. I want to thank our colleagues and yourself for your assistance and your contribution towards making these amendments. Thank you very much.
Buon Povetto, Senator Uggan, anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, anyone else? Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I will be very brief, but I just want to rise to support Bill 424-30. I want to say that I want to recognize the sponsor, but not only the sponsor, but the oversight chair of this bill, this issue, Speaker Wampat. You know, for some time now, I've been very concerned, as many of us have, with the makeup, the current makeup of the Guam Education Policy Board. And if anybody would ask, what do you think the biggest problem is with the Department of Education, my response would be the structure. We've seen that, in many instances, money has not only been an issue with how that department is really going above and beyond to try to meet those needs of our students. But it's not the money that's been an issue, Madam Speaker, but more so the structure. You have a board that's elected by the people, but yet there was never any true recognition of that exercise in democracy, because they're just merely a policy board. And because they're a policy board, whenever these elected members express any concerns with any problem within DOE, the superintendent, no matter who that person is, would automatically tell those board members, you know, that's management, that's operations, that's not policy. And you are only allowed to discuss things that deal with policy. So inherently, you continue to have that conflict. I know that Dr. Nerissa Underwood is trying to do her best. I know that the staff is trying to do their best. But in the wanting to do their best, they still have to deal with the relationship that they have with the board. This board hires the superintendent, but yet there's no check and balance, because the idea is that they're just supposed to hire the superintendent and let the superintendent be. But how can you have that kind of structure and still have a good relationship between the superintendent and the Guam Education Policy Board? So the other problem with the current makeup, Madam Speaker, as we know, is the governor's involvement with the board and with the Department of Education. The Department of Education is not and should not be considered a fourth branch of government. I understand in my discussions with the oversight chair that there is a strong commitment to reform the manner in which the budget is submitted to the legislature. The governor proposes every year the budget for the educational institutions, and his proposal for UOG, GCC, DOE, I believe the libraries and KGTF, just DOE's proposal alone is much more than what the governor's carved out for these educational institutions. And so if we start with Bill 424, and I know there's a genuine commitment to try to see if this board can be patterned after the University of Guam Board or even the Guam Community College Board, so that they go beyond this just policymaking type structure. But I think the fact that you're infusing the governor's appointed representatives together with elected representatives, you already begin to address the issue between the executive branch and what to do with DOE, who's supposed to be a part of the executive branch. So, and I know that the oversight chair is committed to addressing that in the weeks to come. I know that by addressing Bill 424, it's time sensitive, because we don't want to move after these candidates have filed their intentions to run with the Guam Election Commission. I'm glad to see that a lot of cooperation has been made, that the current elected members will be able to serve out their term. And so when this bill passes, if it passes and becomes law, that the current members who are elected will be able to write out their term, and so 2012, we'll see a reelection for those kinds of, for those positions. But beginning January, you would be able to see an additional three members to be appointed by the incoming governor. And hopefully, that we could start to see a better relationship, because we're moving forward to improve the structure. And that's fundamentally what's been the problem with the Guam Department of Education. And so I know that just because this bill's going to become law, and that's our hope, that's our intent, I know that the real work is trying to craft legislation to see the balance between, maybe because this is a hybrid approach, the next hybrid approach should be a kind of hybrid between a policymaking board versus a management type board. And I know that the speaker has been in constant communication, constant dialogue with the education community and the various stakeholders to see how that kind of bridge can be identified and how we can move toward that direction. But I stand in support of the bill. I think that by having both entities, it's a necessary step, but there's still many steps that we have to take to make that board really like a board, a governing board, to govern and be able to have the authority to implement their policies, but to be careful that they don't become micromanagers within the department. So, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Buon Povetto, Senator Rispicio, anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, anyone else? Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I will be very brief, but I just want to rise to support Bill 424-30. I want to say that I want to recognize the sponsor, but not only the sponsor, but the oversight chair of this bill, this issue, Speaker Wampat. You know, for some time now, I've been very concerned, as many of us have, with the makeup, the current makeup of the Guam Education Policy Board. And if anybody would ask, what do you think the biggest problem is with the Department of Education, my response would be the structure. We've seen that, in many instances, money has not only been an issue with how that department is really going above and beyond to try to meet those needs of our students. But it's not the money that's been an issue, Madam Speaker, but more so the structure. You have a board that's elected by the people, but yet there was never any true recognition of that exercise in democracy, because they're just merely a policy board. And because they're a policy board, whenever these elected members express any concerns with any problem within DOE, the superintendent, no matter who that person is, would automatically tell those board members, you know, that's management, that's operations, that's not policy. And you are only allowed to discuss things that deal with policy. So inherently, you continue to have that conflict. I know that Dr. Nerissa Underwood is trying to do her best. I know that the staff is trying to do their best. But in the wanting to do their best, they still have to deal with the relationship that they have with the board. This board hires the superintendent, but yet there's no check and balance, because the idea is that they're just supposed to hire the superintendent and let the superintendent be. But how can you have that kind of structure and still have a good relationship between the superintendent and the Guam Education Policy Board? So the other problem with the current makeup, Madam Speaker, as we know, is the governor's involvement with the board and with the Department of Education. The Department of Education is not and should not be considered a fourth branch of government. I understand in my discussions with the oversight chair that there is a strong commitment to reform the manner in which the budget is submitted to the legislature. The governor proposes every year the budget for the educational institutions, and his proposal for UOG, GCC, DOE, I believe the libraries and KGTF, just DOE's proposal alone is much more than what the governor's carved out for these educational institutions. And so if we start with Bill 424, and I know there's a genuine commitment to try to see if this board can be patterned after the University of Guam Board or even the Guam Community College Board, so that they go beyond this just policymaking type structure. But I think the fact that you're infusing the governor's appointed representatives together with elected representatives, you already begin to address the issue between the executive branch and what to do with DOE, who's supposed to be a part of the executive branch. So, and I know that the oversight chair is committed to addressing that in the weeks to come. I know that by addressing Bill 424, it's time sensitive, because we don't want to move after these candidates have filed their intentions to run with the Guam Election Commission. I'm glad to see that a lot of cooperation has been made, that the current elected members will be able to serve out their term. And so when this bill passes, if it passes and becomes law, that the current members who are elected will be able to write out their term, and so 2012, we'll see a reelection for those kinds of, for those positions. But beginning January, you would be able to see an additional three members to be appointed by the incoming governor. And hopefully, that we could start to see a better relationship, because we're moving forward to improve the structure. And that's fundamentally what's been the problem with the Guam Department of Education. And so I know that just because this bill's going to become law, and that's our hope, that's our intent, I know that the real work is trying to craft legislation to see the balance between, maybe because this is a hybrid approach, the next hybrid approach should be a kind of hybrid between a policymaking board versus a management type board. And I know that the speaker has been in constant communication, constant dialogue with the education community and the various stakeholders to see how that kind of bridge can be identified and how we can move toward that direction. But I stand in support of the bill. I think that by having both entities, it's a necessary step, but there's still many steps that we have to take to make that board really like a board, a governing board, to govern and be able to have the authority to implement their policies, but to be careful that they don't become micromanagers within the department. So, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Buon Povetto, Senator Rispicio, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will recognize
for, you know, their input. And I listened really intently to the good senator from Baragada, and I really appreciate, you know, the comparison that is given on either an elected or an appointed board, and in terms of trying to improve our school system, whether it be the curriculum, the facility, teachers, accountability, high performance of our student. And I really sense of the passion that he has for education, and, and I share that as well, because I'm just as passionate as, as he and our other members in here, and especially because I actually came from the trenches and actually have served under, I'll use the school principal, under both an elected and an appointed board. And I really believe that it is everybody's intent here, who would do whatever needs to be done to help improve our school system and to help our children become successful. The, as, as we deliberated, and then the good senator from Jonia also then made the, the amendment to increase the, the number of elected individuals, to, to ensure then that we do maintain that the democratic process in which then they, in the election, election process, so that they too will then bring the voice of, of the, of the people into the board meeting. And after, you know, giving it a lot of thought now, and then going back again to what Senator Panglinin had said, that when you really kind of weigh all this and we decide what it is that we want to say, would be our priority, whether it's stability in management, or stability in, rather, stable management, or stability in terms of continuance, continuity of the members who, who are going to be a part of the board, and then the check and balance as well. And, and really now, when you look at it, it's really, and for me, at first, I mean, I was thinking four and three, then this is almost balanced in the sense of numbers, but in terms of bringing in, providing, rather, for that election process, that truly now, I, I think even more, that it will really balance things out now, that we will be able to get the best of both worlds. I'd like to also reassure the, our senator from Mingilau, Senator Guthers, who was always wanting to try to bring then the, the governance and the, the council, or board members, but in this case, a council closest to where our children are, so that then we can empower not just our teachers, our administrators, but including our parents. And she is definitely, and I'm proud to say, is a co-sponsor of that community school councils, that we're, we're actually, we've introduced the bill, and I'm actually working closely with members of our school community who have been already, they have a copy of the bill and are providing some input to the committee. So we're heading towards, you know, that goal as well, to be able then to empower those closest to our schoolchildren, so that then we would be able to hopefully see then that we would have that, you know, high performance. But ultimately, the responsibility really will not just be the council, the teachers, administrators, the parents, but really all of us, and that includes us as policymakers here in, in this legislature. So after, you know, oh, and another thing I'd just like to say then, I guess, to the listening audience then, is that if you really look at it, what it really boils down to now is that there will be six elected members, and there will be two, I mean, three then, that will be appointed. And even the appointed members, if you really look at it, they're really very representative of our community, because one is that it specifically states that we want to make sure that we get a parent who is, who would be appointed. The other, again, is to ensure, again, the other stakeholders, and those will be an educator, whether it's a teacher or school administrator. And then the third will be someone as well in, in upper management, that will be able to provide and bring a different perspective from the private sector in terms of how, you know, they would run, you see, their business. So just think of those numbers, and you really see now that it'll bring us to a total yes of nine, which is still a fairly comfortable number, although, you know, sometimes, you know, you, when you say the larger it is, the harder it is to make a decision, the smaller it is, the easier it is. And, but then again, when you stop and think about the, the different views that you can bring to the table, would be greater also with a greater number. I like to also say that, and no one has mentioned it, but the stipend has actually been increased also from the normal $100, now to $250, so that we'll be able to attract, you know, more individuals who are, you know, interested and will really, you know, I know devote their time, dedicate their time. And I know it's not a money issue, because we've always been able to, to bring some members of our community to, to participate, but that truly will help to, be an incentive as well for members to consider running. The, the other thing that should be mentioned here is that when the appointed members normally that are serving, and if there's a new, of course, administration that comes in, is that there's not, there, there won't be a need for courtesy resignation with a new administration coming in, because then you want that individual to complete its three-year term, which will provide some continuity as well who are sitting on, on the board. I think that that was basically the change, I mean, the changes, yes, in the bill. What I'd like to offer as an amendment, Mr. Speaker, is that if you can please look on page seven, and this is at the request of our colleague who took on the task of, a very difficult task, of chairing the, you know, the Committee on Ethics, and on line, right after line four, to add a C, a subsection C, and this is for automatically removal of, you know, a board member, and to add this based on what we've done as elected members here as well, is that upon conviction of a crime of moral turpitude. So that will be one of the amendments that I'd like to, to offer.
On the amendment, to add a subsection C, so line, page seven, line, line seven, a new line seven, C, automatic removal upon conviction of a crime of moral, of moral turpitude.
Yes.
A crime involving moral turpitude, correct?
Yes.
Okay, on that, on that amendment, are there no objections ordered?
Thank you. The second amendment is on page fifteen, and after line nine, nineteen, that the superintendent shall serve until the expiration of her contract, and to add these words, unless removed for cause within section 3103.1 of this chapter.
Okay, on that, on that amendment, are there no objections ordered?
Thank you very much, again.
Madam Speaker, please just, just sure the clerk has it in writing.
I will, thank you very much. I'd just like to thank, you know, of course, my colleagues who are sitting here very patiently and listening attentively, you know, to all of the, the proposals, the discussion, and I definitely appreciate listening to, to everyone. It has heightened, of course, you know, my, my belief and my passion in wanting to, to assist and helping in the process, and I know that everybody here feels the same way. So I, you know, on behalf of the Vice Speaker, as the primary author, is that, you know, I'd like to make that motion into place, Bill 424 substituted in the floor and further amended, be sent down to the third reading file.
On that motion to place Bill 424-30 and as further substituted on the floor, are there no objections ordered? We'll be recessed until 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. Thank you.